Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, you all can hear me okay. I think we are ready to begin. Uh, I cannot hear you, so if you can hear me, can you please just give me a thumbs up? And that tells me that we are ready to begin. Thank you, Director Corn. I can see your thumb up. So we are ready to begin. Uh, before we begin our meeting, uh, the board will actually take um, a special action item, just very quickly, uh, to approve my um, participation tonight virtually. And so at this time, I'll entertain a motion from the board to move forward with that.
I move that we include President Brown virtually.
Thank you so much, Director Corn. Is there a second?
I can second.
Thank you, Director Vasudev. It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposers have the same sign. Abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Uh, at this, uh, thank you so much.
I need to do the roll call since you're participating remotely.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, please do. Uh, we will take a, we will uh, go back to that vote, you all. Um, and any vote that we take tonight will be a roll call vote. And so uh, please pause me if I call for ayes or uh, opposers, because Ms. Travis will take a roll call vote for every single action item that we take tonight. And so at this time, Ms. Travis, can you please call the roll for the vote?
Absolutely. Uh, Director Anna Vasudev?
Presente.
Um, Director Vasudev, we are uh, voting on um, my participation virtually. Um, so when Ms. Travis calls your name, uh, we are saying yes or no or abstaining from the vote.
Ye- yes.
Uh, Director Jenkorn?
Yes.
Aye. Uh, Director Jennifer Shinoski is excused this evening. Vice President Mike Chang?
Aye.
Uh, President Kadija Brown?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, alright, we will now uh, go ahead and get started with our agenda. Thank you, everyone uh, who came out tonight. Uh, first, I'd like to apologize for the tardiness of the board. Uh, and thank you so much for your patience as we were um, handling our closed session items. Um, our board bylaws caused that we do not begin our open session uh, before 7:00 PM. And so we do have the flexibility uh, to begin after 7:00 PM. And so tonight, we needed to take the time um, to exercise that right. So thank you all so much for understanding and apologies again uh, for keeping you all waiting. Uh, at this time, we need to approve our uh, meeting agenda for uh, tonight, February 5th, 2025. Are there any corrections that need to be made to the agenda before we move forward with the vote?
Yes, President Brown, I'd like to ask that Agenda Item 12.9 be moved to Action on tonight's agenda.
Thank you so much. We will remove 12.9 from a consent item, and we will move it uh, tonight for Action. We will take Action uh, on this item after our facilities update. And so this item will become 14.2 on our agenda. Are there any other question or corrections that need to be made to the agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to do so.
Move by Director Chang. Is there a second?
I'll second with the recommended changes.
Seconded by uh, Director Vasudev with the recommended changes. Ms. Travis, can you please call the roll?
Uh, Director uh, Mike Chang, I'm sorry, Director Jenkorn?
Aye.
Director Anna Vasudev?
Aye.
Vice uh, President Brown, I um, our new BTA student rep is joining us on the dais today. So I'll be Lysia Garcia. So I'll be calling her for um, for uh, for vote as well. Student Director Lysia Garcia. Aye. Vice President uh, Mike Chang?
Aye.
And President Kadija Brown?
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you so much. Uh, Director Garcia, thank you so much for joining us tonight and representing your school. We are very happy to uh, have you join as our student board director um, and hope that you will find uh, tonight's meeting informative. Uh, there will be an opportunity for you tonight to speak um, during the board committee comments, to just uh, welcome yourself to the community um, and say a little spill about um, yourself and your school and your plans uh, while being on the board. And so we are delighted to have you here uh, and are very excited to um, to work with you. So welcome. At this time, Ms. Travis, can you actually call the roll of the board?
Um, Director Jennifer Shinoski is excused this evening. Uh, Director Anna Vasudev?
Now presente.
Director Jennifer Corn?
I'm here.
Student Director Lysia Garcia?
Present.
Vice President Mike Chang?
Uh, present.
And President Kadija Brown?
I am present. Thank you so much. Director Chang, we are ready for your report out from closed session.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, today, uh, we did have a closed session and um, reporting firstly on a special session from last Thursday, January 30th, uh, the board received guidance from the district. With regard to 3.1, uh, the district recommendation was moved by Director Corn and seconded by Director Vasudev. Board voted unanimously to approve. With regard to 3.1.2, the district recommendation was moved by Director Vasudev and seconded by Director Chang. Board voted unanimously to approve. With regard to 3.1.3, the district recommendation was moved by Director Corn and seconded by Director Vasudev. Board voted unanimously to approve. With regard to 3.2, the district recommendation was um, moved by President Brown, seconded by Director Vasudev, and the board voted unanimously to approve. I'm sorry, that's the second one. Um, uh, with the first one, the board requested further information and provision of documents review in order to ensure that the new board is fully informed on this pre-existing matter. And with regard to 3.3, um, with regard to the uh, that item, the district recommendation was moved by Director Vasudev, um, seconded by Director Chang. The board voted unanimously to approve. Um, with regard to 3.4, uh, there were two items, 3.4.1, the district's recommendation was moved by President Brown, seconded by Director Corn, and the board voted unanimously to approve. With regard to item 3.4.2, the district's recommendation was moved by Director Corn, seconded by President Brown, and the board voted unanimously to approve. Um, with regard to 3.5, the board decided to table this to the next meeting. Uh, with regard to 3.6, um, the district's recommendation, that's 3.6.1, the district's recommendation was moved by President Brown, seconded by Director Corn. The board voted unanimously. And something I forgot to note, under 3.2, um, uh, with regard to the second issue there, there are two potential cases. Director Chang, myself, recused himself. And I think we have covered it all.
Yes, we have. Thank you so much for your report out from closed session, Director Chang. Superintendent Formorcel, whenever you're ready, we will see, receive your superintendent comments.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, BUSD family. So this is February, and this February, like every February, BUSD recognizes Black History Month, uplifting, honoring, and celebrating the many contributions made by the Black community here in Berkeley and across our country and our world. This year's theme is African Americans and Labor, honoring the work both free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary of African Americans in shaping and transforming our country and our BUSD, our Berkeley community. We are fortunate for the Black labor that in its excellence has supported and transformed our district in so many ways and continues to do so every day. Um, as usual, we have teaching and family guides to celebrate Black History Month, grade level reading list, BUSD staff posters, and a variety of other resources available on our Black History Month page, resource page in our district, on our district website. Um, recent times, we know, have not felt easy, which is why this week, during National School Counseling Week, we take time to honor our BUSD counselors, another one of the many groups of adults who take care of our babies here in BUSD. Um, our counselors center our students in the work that they do every day. Time and again, these dedicated professionals meet students where they are, collaborate with teachers, staff, and families, hold space during challenging moments in our schools, and create safe spaces where students can feel seen, connected, and supported in their personal well-being and their academic goals. So we wanted to make sure that tonight, we stop and we say, BUSD counselors, we see you and we appreciate you and all that you do. Do y'all know what time it is? It's actually 7:42, but that's not what I'm talking about. Um, this is, you heard our associates who pretend to get excited. It is survey time. This is the time of the year where we do our annual BUSD planning survey. This is a really important survey. Um, we set a goal last year and exceeded that goal with over 1,500 responses from you all, from our educators and staff, and from our students, giving us feedback on the work that we're doing here in BUSD. And so each year, we invite this feedback, and we're doing it again this year. Your feedback really matters, not only as we uh, engage in continuous improvement and think about and rethink our process, our progress towards our LCAP goals, but it's also very important as we continue to move along the path of creating a strategic plan for Berkeley Unified School District. Um, these questions, many of them are required um, by law, and then some of them you will find are just additional information that we think is helpful, again, as we work together towards our mission and vision. Um, we want to ask again that parents and caregivers and our students and staff take the time to fill out the survey. And you can please check your email starting tomorrow with information of how to complete and submit your survey. I know there's been many concerns regarding the encampment at Civic Center Park and our students' safety coming to and from high school each day, and quite frankly, the safety of some of our adults and educators as well. In light of the incident reported to the BHS community last week in which a student was inappropriately touched, BUSD staff, President Brown, and I uh, met with the mayor, city manager, chief of police, and other city staff to coordinate and calibrate and think about an appropriate collective response, as well as how we could communicate to you, our community, to make sure that you know that we're doing all that we can to keep everyone safe. I can share that the Berkeley Police Department has increased their patrols at the park, including a bike patrol. Um, and we are working to work on flyers and information to make sure that our students and our staff know who to call and contact in case of uh, feelings of unsafety or worry. Um, but also, we make sure that you all know the various protocols that we're working on together. With that in mind, Berkeley High School has a PTSA meeting this Friday. Um, and it actually happens every Friday, but this Friday in particular, um, Mayor Adina Ishi will be joining that meeting with this particular encampment and the concerns. Um, and the ideas of how to uh, support both our unhoused, but also to support and make sure that our students and staff are safe is the main topic. So we invite you, BU BHS families and staff and students, or just anyone in the BUSD or Berkeley community who's interested in that topic, to please join. I don't have the time, but I will make sure to get that and get it out to you as well. Thank you very, collaboration and action. A-15, um, the BHS PTSA meeting, and again, you do not have to be a BHS uh, community member or a student or staff member to join, and that would be with Mayor Adina Ishi. So please come out. Um, do you have something that's broken? Listen, y'all, this is a whole interactive. Um, so if you do, you're in luck. Uh, because the third BUSD Fix-It Fest is this Saturday, February 8th, from 1:00 to 3:30 at Longfellow Middle School. Now, it's a little bit, you know, misleading, because I don't think they fix anything. Um, but this free event taps into the collective genius of community members who offer their skills to help others learn how to repair their broken items. Everyone is welcome, and there will even be special hands-on repair activities for kids. They fix anything?
They fix the vacuum cleaner.
They fix the vacuum cleaner. Okay, um, tonight's agenda. Want to direct your attention to tonight's agenda. We have a couple of presentations that we are excited about. One is the long-awaited facilities update, um, brought to you by our associate, our Assistant Superintendent John Kalis and his amazing team. And so if folks have questions about um, some of the construction projects that are happening or that are on calendar to happen, tonight is your night. So please stay for that presentation. We'll also have an update from our curriculum and instruction team um, about our multilingual learner plan and the ways in which we're implementing that plan and progress monitoring and service of all of our um, language learners here in BUSD. I also want to call your attention to the various policies on our information items list, including high school graduation requirements, student use of technology, and academic honesty. Some of those um, policies are on for first read, and that is the opportunity for the board to read and give feedback to staff before bringing it back for second read, which is the time in which the board takes action on those policies. So I wanted to call those to your attention. And finally, I want to do a couple welcomes before I wrap up my time. I want to say welcome to Lysia Garcia, who is our 11th grade student rep from BTA. Yay. Um, she has attended uh, BTA or Berkeley High for two years previous to coming to BTA, and she's excited about joining the school board because she's excited to advocate for others, and I'm sure she'll share more about herself and her interests uh, when it's her time to speak. We also have an alternate for Lysia, and that is Evelyn Velasquez. Is Evelyn here this evening? Hi Evelyn. Evelyn, make big, big, so I can see you. So Evelyn Velasquez is also a senior at Berkeley Technical, um, Technology Academy. And before attending BTA, she attended Oakland Military Institute, and Evelyn says that she's really excited to be a part of the school board because she wants students to be more heard about their opinions and make systems and the district fair for all students. A final welcome to the BUSD family, not new to the BUSD family, but definitely new in this capacity. Want to say hello and welcome and congratulations to Mrs. Andrea Ambrose, who has been a teacher at Berkeley Arts Magnet Elementary School for the past, I know she's here, for the past, for the past nine years. And Andrea will join Longfellow Middle School in the vice principal role. So welcome to school admin, I don't know, you didn't get the memo, huh? Welcome, uh, Andrea. Ms. Ambrose recently completed a graduate program to obtain her administrative credential, and we are thrilled to place her in this administrative role at Longfellow. But like I said, she's been a longstanding educator and part of the BUSD community, formerly a BAM, um, formerly working with the BAM students, and now at Longfellow. So thank you for joining us in this new capacity. We look forward to the amazing things you're going to do on behalf of students and families in BUSD. And with that, President, I am done with my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, Superintendent Formorcel. Um, we will now move on to um, our open session for uh, for uh, public comment, public testimony. Um, uh, since I am not there in person, I've asked Director Chang uh, to please assist me uh, with calling um, all of the cards that are green so folks could um, speak on various topics. I will set tonight's speaking time at one minute per public speaker. Um, however, if there are groups, and I believe Director Chang, we have a couple of groups who are going to speak tonight, um, their speaking time will be five minutes, and I'm going to ask you all to please um, prepare your comments accordingly so that you can get as many speakers um, as you can within that five-minute speaking period. Um, it is always the intention of the board to prioritize our student speakers because we are all here in service of our students. And so uh, Vice President Chang, as you call up speakers tonight, please ensure that you first prioritize our student speakers um, and then uh, move on to our groups, and then finally, our individual speakers. At this time, I'll turn it over to you, uh, Director Chang, with the reminder that after we are done with all of the open comments in person, you will then move on to um, to move on to the Zoom comments, uh, beginning first with our student speakers who are uh, interested in speaking on Zoom. Um, those who are interested in speaking on Zoom who are students, please identify yourself by putting student before or after your name so that Director Chang can identify you. Director Chang, whenever you are ready to begin.
Thank you so much, President Brown. Um, uh, first up on students, we have, and please tell me if I've mispronounced your name and uh, having trouble with some of the handwriting, Maiko Choi, Longfellow student.
Hello, my name is Maiko Choi. I'm a sixth grader at Longfellow Middle School. I like my friends and teachers at Longfellow Community. I am here tonight to talk about the condition of our school and how disappointing and that we cannot go to a old Longfellow school. And that our current school is going to be smaller and major soon. We have no play equipment. The basketball hoops are broken the first two months of school. So did the tetherball. The volleyball net broke soon after. We are at 100 days at school and no improvement. At lunch, many of us just sit around. For PE, we walk to James Kennedy, but by the way, by the time we get there, we have 10 minutes for PE, and then we have to walk back. Now, I'm told that the front of the parking lot is going to be a big construction project, which I assume will be noisy and dirty. You are also taking part of, part of a play area away. It is not looking good for me, and no one has a plan for changing it in all three years in no school.
Thank you so much. Um, next up with students, we have Jade Burrows, which, who is apparently also Longfellow. Thanks so much.
Is it already on? Oh. Um, hi, my name is Jade, and I'm a sixth grader at Longfellow Middle. I'm really disappointed that we're going to have a construction project at our school. I didn't move schools in elementary school with Oxford, and now I'm going to move again. The old Longfellow was four blocks from my house, and now it's a cold and tiring bike ride. I really want to have a safe and quiet learning environment and space to play volleyball. All the basketball hoops are broken, and our volleyball net is destroyed. All my King friends have a skate park, two baseball fields, a track, and a huge grassy field, but we have a concrete yard. Um, I thought the schools are supposed to be fair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have former school board president, Beatriz Levia Cutler.
Thank you, Honorable Superintendent, Board President, and School Board Directors. My name is Beatriz Leva Cutler, a former school board member for 2000, from 2008 to 2020, and my daughter of, and, sorry. Sorry, I am um, I'm the daughter of an undocumented parent, and he was caught by ICE one, the same day my sister was born. And my sister and I are considered what is now termed anchor babies because of undocumented status, my father, though my mother was born in San Antonio, Texas, and is a US citizen. Still, my father had to return to Mexico before becoming a California legal resident many years later. Both my parents are deceased, but I know that they would be traumatized, they would be traumatized. They would be re-traumatized to know that our schools, hospitals, and childcare places where families participate and fa- and visit are unsafe and unprotected. Please support 100% the resolution, Item 12.9 that is now going to consent. Please support that in SBA 48. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Matt Lasner. I'm trying to pronounce your name properly.
Sure, uh, I'm part of a group of parents of Longfellow, and uh, I don't know if you want to give us collectively five minutes?
Yes.
We also had a certain order in which we kind of wanted to.
Sure, collectively five minutes, and um, uh, are there, you want to come on up with the order with the folks?
Okay.
That are speaking. Oh. Thank you.
Alright, so um, we're here to speak on behalf of a growing number of current and incoming Longfellow students and their families. Longfellow families are frustrated and angry by the lack of transparency and communication about the workforce housing project that is scheduled to begin in a month. I'm here to voice our collective frustration with BUSD's failure to acknowledge the gross inequities this project creates for those students at Longfellow compared to their peers at BUSD. We are here to ask BUSD to meet several conditions before breaking ground. One, search for a new site for Longfellow and move it there. The ideal solution for many families, if feasible, would be to delay construction until Longfellow's rebuild is done in 2027. Short of that, BUSD should search for an alternative space or spaces. King and Willard, with their libraries, science classrooms, athletic facilities, green space, adequate ventilation, gardens, and other facilities have plenty of space for portables. Moving Longfellow would not only ensure a standard learning environment, it would alleviate Principal Mitchell from having to keep an eye on Berkeleyite's adult school construction as well as Longfellow's. Two, so long as Longfellow remains at Berkeley Adult School, we want BUSD to address four areas of concern. Campus health and safety, traffic safety, equity, and governance and communication. Regarding campus site health and safety, first, we want a site-specific safety plan that accounts for the construction's proximity to students as well as sensitive populations in the neighborhood. Next, we want to address noise. We want BUSD to install and maintain a sound level recording device in every classroom, along with other spaces indoors and out. Commit in writing to enforcing standards of acceptable classroom noise. Provide sound attenuation barriers, barriers on all scaffolding on the east face of the new building. It will be 60 to 70 feet tall, and early in the project, that height will exceed the 20-foot sound wall described in BUSD at the webinar in December. Create and maintain a website with real-time noise readings and a log of average and exceeded noise levels for each recording device. Develop a series of actions to meet standards for noise should they be violated. Next, regarding air quality, in advance of construction, BUSD needs to test indoor air quality and form mold through Berkeley Adult School when the windows are closed and the HVAC system is operating to ensure they're acceptable. Two, install and maintain an indoor air quality recording device in every classroom. Install and maintain outdoor air quality recording devices in areas where students congregate. Commit in writing to enforce standards of acceptable indoor and outdoor air quality set by the US EPA for sensitive groups. Ensure that indoor and outdoor monitors record levels of carbon monoxide, lead, nitrogen, and so on. Construction, construction site safety. We want to have you commit to ensuring safety precautions will be in place, including locking away equipment when not in use, storing hazardous material and waste properly. Commit in writing to ensuring that construction workers comport themselves properly while in proximity to middle school students. Regarding traffic and safety, there have been three individuals hit already this school year. So to ensure student pedestrian and bicyclist safety throughout the school day, we want BUSD to provide traffic guards across San Pablo at Virginia, across Curtis at San, at Francisco, across San Pablo at Virginia to ensure safe crossings to James Kennedy for PE. Move all pedestrian and bicycle traffic to uh, Francisco Street, and we have a few others. Equity in green space is a major concern for Longfellow families. We want BUSD to acknowledge and quantify disparities in access to playing fields, gyms, PE, gardening, and other green spaces between Longfellow and Willard, Longfellow and King and Willard. We want to ensure access to James Kennedy PE, uh, Kenny Park for PE recess and learns. Arrange for access to Cedar Rose Park and dedicate the entire back parking lot to recreation and sport for PE recess and after-school by removing all storage containers in construction. And uh, regarding governance, we want a dedicated staff member at BUSD's expense, not our principal, to facilitate communication between BUSD and the construction team. So there are many more additional things that we will forward to you documented, and we're prepared to engage in continued actions and advocacy.
Thank you so much. Uh, please feel free to email with additional information. Thank you very much.
Um, Vice President Chang, a quick question. Uh, do you currently have in your hand more than five um, speaker cards regarding the Longfellow um, item?
Um, those appear to be the, well, there is at least one.
Okay.
Two.
Um, I, I just want to make a note for the public, um, because I did, there was someone who asked a question in regards to this earlier. Um, so I want to make sure that we are um, both transparent and equitable to the community. Typically, we allow five minutes if there are five or more speaker cards uh, for a specific item. If we do not have more than five speaker cards on that specific item, it is really important that we are equitable and provide only one minute um, to each speaker. Um, so Director Chang, as you continue with the public speaking period um, this evening, um, let us please do so. Um, and thank you all for the comments that you all made. Okay?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. We're free to continue.
Great. Just for the record, we do have five, but some were students. Of the five. Thank you so much.
And I believe three of their students were already given the opportunity to speak. Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. Thank you. Um, uh, next up for public speaking, we have Stacy Hara. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Stacy Zolt-Hara. I have two kids at BUSD, an eighth grader at King and a senior at Berkeley High, who you'll hear from later tonight. I want to start by thanking all of you for taking so seriously the incident at Civic Park last week and the ongoing risk to the area. I'm here to urge you to do more and do it fast. I don't need to tell you that every single day, BHS administrators manage a litany of unknown, unpredictable risks. Every day, our students also manage the risk of just moving around in the world with a lot of unknown, unpredictable risks. This encampment is a known risk. It is an actual live fire for which the city is holding the fire extinguisher and just doesn't want to squeeze the handle to put it out. It is an actual live fire for which the city is holding the fire extinguisher and just doesn't want to squeeze the handle to put it out. They have a lot of citizens with competing interests to balance. Kids should come first, and I urge you to take on that voice as the school district and help them to prioritize our children. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Also, please feel free to email as all folks may. Next on up is Daniel Friedman. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So we will hear him in a bit. We still have a number of cards here. In person is Sweeney Burrows. Oh, you already went? Okay, cool. Thank you. And we have Madeline Roberts Rich, I believe is the last. Hi there.
Howdy, everyone. My name is Madeline Roberts Rich. I was in the class of two thousand twelve at Berkeley High. I'm here because I ran into a classmate of mine today, actually, excuse me, last week, I was behind in line of some teenagers at CVS. And I saw one of them pull out three dollars worth of quarters to buy an Arizona iced tea and a large thing of Fritos and count out the quarters, and it brought me right back to my high school days. Where I had the most inadequate nutritional education and I had very little money. And anyway, I developed an eating disorder at age eleven, and I finally solved it, and I'm out of the woods now. And I think that, looking back, Berkeley High, despite it being one mile away from the gourmet ghetto and Berkeley being the home of edible schoolyards. At least when I was a student, just had a very cursory nutritional education, and I think Berkeley High students are particularly at risk because there is an open campus. So if they aren't equipped with the tools to navigate nutritional choices, then it's actually a very large risk for them. So I will continue to come back and advocate for enhanced nutritional education for Berkeley High students.
Thank you so much. Please feel free to email us. Next sign up in person is Forrest Bori.
Hi, thank you, everybody, for listening to my comments. So I'm a seventh grade world history teacher at Longfellow Middle School, and as a teacher, I pay into CalSTRS, so does BUSD. So every paycheck that I get, a little bit of that is going to go to Lockheed Martin, the biggest weapons manufacturer in the world. That's a hundred and seventy-six dollars that CalSTRS has invested in them. Caterpillar, who we know demolishes homes and makes military-grade tractors and like those used in the death of Rachel Corey. We have two hundred and fourteen million dollars invested in that corporation. Boeing makes guided bombs. We have two hundred million in that. General Dynamics makes munitions. We have eighty-five million dollars in that. Beletto destroys the environment. We have ninety-five million dollars in that. Volunteer makes surveillance for ICE and other military operations. We're giving them forty-five million dollars. It would be phenomenal if BUSD could align teacher values with, I don't want to give them a cent ever. It's completely against everything I believe in. It's not cool. Thank you for your support and a resolution in the future.
Please feel free to follow up with an email. Thank you. All right. Thank you. In-person speakers. Now we're shifting to online. And I'm trying to see here if we have folks who have raised their hands. Four attendees. And there is one.
Vice President Chang, there are two students who I was giving a heads up about. So first, we'll have student.
Is that student Dior is the first one?
Yes, we'll have student Dior, followed by just student, but I've been alerted that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Charis.
Student Dior.
Good evening.
We can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Dior, and I'm a sophomore in Bridge. In past meetings, Bridge seniors have shared about their college admissions, and students have talked about the waitlist, but I'm here just to explain how important Bridge has been to me. Bridge has supported me not only academically, but mentally. It has expanded my thinking and my desire to be a better student. As a picture, my seventh-year Bridge teacher is someone who I can talk to about anything and go to at any time because he is very understanding. The people who work in Bridge all care about my education and will do anything to give us opportunities. Bridge is so important to me and so many others. In this time of difficult budget cuts, we ask you to prioritize our program. Students and families feel connected and supported, and when we graduate, we have every option open to us, including four-year colleges. Please prioritize Bridge. Thank you for your time and care.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Charis, we have another student, I believe.
The second student looks like they might have left the meeting. If they rejoin, I will alert you, but we can move on to the next five hands.
Okay, and with that, with Laurel Livingston is. Okay, copy. Laurel Livingston is going to be provided opportunity to speak.
No, wait, what?
So sorry, one second.
Okay.
Wait, it's. I can't see anything. Oh, thank you. Hello. My name is Zaden. I'm a sixth grader at Longfellow. We want a real school campus like Willard and King Middle School. I'm on the basketball team. We don't have any places to practice or play our games. It's unfair to go to school at a construction site. We should, we shouldn't wait. Oh, we students don't want to breathe dust. Longfellow students are not getting the fair treatment we need. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Biz, I believe next up, we have Timothy Burrows. Mr. Burrows, you have an opportunity to speak. You appear to be on mute, Mr. Burrows.
There we go. Thank you. To start, I want to say that the subsidized housing project for our teachers and staff said to be built at Longfellow is definitely needed in our community. What's also true is that this, that is, is that the school community that's about to experience the construction project at the school site deserves a lot more proactive and transparent communication about the impacts and the implications of the project for our kids and for our teachers. Today, the communication has been sparse, to say the least. We found out from Berkeley side that the, that the construction at the original site will be delayed and extended. And I think the Longfellow community should be given the courtesy of some direct communication on that, and I think that would go a long way. My understanding is the superintendent plays on to the Longfellow site and provides some more information soon, but that's six months into the school year. And it would have been nice to have that conversation much earlier. I think proactive communication builds trust and understanding. It makes things easier later. And I think the opposite is also true. The lack of communication really damages trust and increases frustration. And I think that's what you're hearing from several speakers tonight.
And follow up with emails. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next on up, we have, and I apologize for any pronunciation, mispronunciation, Smriti Gupta, W A I C.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me all right.
We can hear you.
Okay, so I'm a Longfellow parent of one student, soon to be a Longfellow parent of two students. So Longfellow kids are already in an inequitable space. For example, my daughter, she has leg spasticity due to cerebral palsy. For PE, she has to walk every single day outside of her school to a park, and she comes home every evening complaining about leg pain. And she refuses to wear her corrective boots because she does not feel safe wearing corrective boots in public streets because she has to leave her school every day for PE. And she wants to participate in a PE. We don't want to hold her back, and she really wants to go with her classmates. So that's just one example. And so the parking lots or whatever other assets that Longfellow current campus has needs to be turned into something for the children, for PE, for recess, green spaces, et cetera, not into construction sites. So you know, the inequitable treatment the kids already face, it's going to amplify once the construction starts, both for the kids and teachers. They already get noise from the San Pablo Road, right? So they talk about how they can't open their windows during instruction time, during class time. And now additionally, there will be construction noise. So.
Time has run out. If you want to follow up with an email, please do.
Okay, thank you.
And speakers, please remember you have a minute, and you know, we apologize, but of course, we have to allow everybody to be able to speak, and you'll hear the beeping noise. Next, we have Daniel. Daniel, can you hear us? You're on mute.
Yeah, just unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. I'm Daniel. I have a kid in tenth grade and another in eighth grade, and I'm a member of the Berkeley High Safety Committee and the Districtwide Safety Committee and the PNO. And I'm here tonight to talk to say that our district has no comprehensive policies on gun violence prevention. Aside from three paragraphs buried on page twenty-five of the hundred-and-six-page BUSD Parents/Student Handbook, which I know everyone in this room reads cover to cover, there is no mention of gun prevention in and of our safety policies. For example, BHS safety plans were developed in twenty-one by a consultant focused on ED Code three-five-nine-two-four compliance safety plans, but their relevance and applicability to our community is unclear. Meanwhile, experts, including specialists right here in Berkeley, currently leading gun violence prevention for SFUSD could help us implement evidence-based, locally-informed improvements. To prioritize school safety, the district must take real action. Up-level the role from coordinator to a full-time director of safety, including gun safety. Add an additional SRO as planned in the twenty-twenty-one, reimagining the SRO led by Dr. Shelley. Increase security.
Mr. Daniel, please email us any additional information. Next up would be Laurel. Laurel, you're up next. You're on mute.
Hi, I'm Laurel Nastal. I am a neighbor, lives right next door to Longfellow Middle School as of now. And because of the construction, I want to demand that we get school zone signs on Francisco Street, Curtis. And I think, I believe there's already signs on Virginia. That's it.
Great, thank you. Next on up, we have Chris Rowan. Apologies for any mispronunciations. Chris, you ready? Laurel, yeah. Chris, you're, Chris is not up? Oh, I'm sorry, Chris's hand does not up. So we actually are done with the, except for one card, Daniel Friedman.
He was online.
He was online previously. We did call him. Great. Okay, thanks. That means that we're done with the public comment period.
Thank you so much, Vice President Chang. I appreciate your help. At this time, we will move. Excuse me. We will move from our public comment period to our committee comments. And I believe we have committee comments tonight from D-LAC, and I believe there are committee comments from G-Shack. And if I have missed any other committee comments, you are more than welcome to make your comments following D-LAC and G-Shack.
Hello, my name is Ozgehaj Fazlolo. I am a D-LAC chair and D-LAC representative from the schools, and also I'm a professor of practice at UC Berkeley at School of Education. So today, I'm speaking on behalf of the parents, students, and also as an educator myself and a parent. I'm originally from Istanbul, Turkey, and I want to thank and I'm grateful for all the support I have received as a parent from the ELL program so far. Because we came here three years ago, and my son, who has been diagnosed with IEP with ADHD, and who struggled a lot with ADHD, but at the same time came here with no English, now is very fluent in English. And I, but at the same time, while expressing my gratitude on behalf of myself and the families whom I have interacted so far in the last three years. I think that Berkeley Unified School District serves as a very good model for other districts in with regards to implementing a very successful ELL program. In addition to this, of course, there are some challenges we have experienced. I was lucky that as a parent, we have, and my son received a lot of support in his diagnosis under the IEP program. But from my observations, I've seen that not all the families are aware of the challenges their kids are going through. So in our interactions, in our D-LAC meetings and D-LAC meetings, with the support of our great administrators, we try to create that awareness amongst the families. But we'll appreciate to receive more support from the district to support families and to create some structures. And trying to create that awareness amongst the families who may not be aware of the challenges their kids are going through. At the same time, the other challenge can be seen from the lenses of the teachers. Because our ELL teachers, we have great teachers who are dedicated to create that impact in the lives of their students. But sometimes because of their field, they may not be aware of the challenges created with regards to or based on special education. So this can be one of the pathways that can be created and to support teachers, ELL teachers in the district. And based on our conversations in our meetings, I have learned that our program, ELL program, and the multi-language master program also incorporated a new model, which will be shared, I guess, soon by our administrators. That is a very important program focusing on dual identified students who struggle both in between learning a new language and especially being under the spectrum of special education. So we are very happy to hear that those developments will create an impact in the lives of families. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you as well for your comments. Next, we will receive our G-Shack comments, followed by our PAC comments.
Good evening, Board. My name is Rebecca Levinson, and I'm the co-chair of the, G-Shack stands for Gender Equity Sexual Harassment Advisory or Committee. But I'm going to actually save my time and hand it over to students who've been directly affected by the homeless encampment across the street from their school.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Isabel Akneun, and I sit as one of the student representatives on the Gender Equity and Sexual Harassment Advisory Committee, otherwise known as G-Shack. I am here to talk about the incident of sexual assault across from Berkeley High School that happened last week, my own experience with the homeless encampment, and to ask the school board to take action by working with the city. A couple of weeks ago, while walking to Trader Joe's for lunch, I passed a homeless encampment that, for those of you who don't know, is located right across the street from Berkeley High. As I walked by, someone shouted two deeply offensive cat calls. Feeling uncomfortable, I chose to ignore it, as so many of us are conditioned to do in these moments. And on my way back, I chose to take a different route. That following week, an email circulated informing us that on January twenty-ninth, a student had been groped inappropriately by someone at the encampment. Both because of the type of person I am and because of my role on G-Shack, I talked to my friends and people I knew who frequently went to Trader Joe's at lunch and realized that my incident was not isolated. Many of them shared similar experiences of being cat called and whistled at. This is not just a pervasive matter that affects female students. It affects everyone. Male students who skateboard at the park have also faced harassment, especially from aggressive dogs and their owners. Specifically, on the note of aggressive dogs within the encampment, one of our security officers was attacked and injured by one of these dogs. I understand that this is a controversial issue, and in no way is my speaking tonight meant to contribute to a not-in-my-backyard messaging mentality. However, I do believe it is critical that we prioritize the safety of students. So I am here not just as a member of G-Shack, but also as a child and a student, asking that the school board advocate for us.
We, the students, use our voices every day to bring attention to the issues that matter to us. But quite frankly, we also rely on you, the leaders of our community, to protect us. We look to you to create an environment where we can learn, grow, and thrive without the fear of harassment or harm. We are asking you to make a formal request that the city council make the removal of the encampment across the street from Berkeley High a first priority. Recently, about two hours ago, we spoke with council member Triggum's chief of staff about the homeless encampment and plans regarding of the future of it. His chief of staff explained to us that there is no plans to shift the focus from addressing the homeless encampment that is on Harrison Street to the Berkeley High. that is on Harrison Street to the Berkeley High, to the campus at Civic Center Park near Berkeley High and Washington Elementary School in order to keep students safe. Even more concerning, they notified us of plans to open up the rest of the park later this month. This is only going to exacerbate the problem and is actually going to do the opposite of the goal, which is keeping students safe. Thank you so much for your time and for your commitment to keeping our students safe. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you both for your comments this evening. Next, we will move to our PAC comments.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Labrandy. I am the parent of two students at Berkeley Arc Magnet, and I am here as the Chair of the Parent Advisory Committee. I'm here tonight to give an update on the PAC's work so far this year and our priorities for the remainder of the year. The PAC is a parent group that is tasked with reviewing and providing essential feedback on the district's local control and accountability plan, ensuring that our spending and programs truly serve all students' needs. Our committee members represent diverse parent perspectives with special attention to supporting our English learners, low-income students, foster youth, and students with disabilities. We take seriously our role in helping the district create measurable goals and track progress toward meeting them. The PAC consists of members from each school in the district with multiple seats for the middle school sites and Berkeley High. And for the first time this year, our committee also includes two seats for students. We are excited to have their voices among us and so grateful for their perspectives. We began the year with a nearly full slate of representatives with only two seats unfilled and many sites with designated alternates. Unfortunately, we've had several PAC members step back since the beginning of the year, including my co-chair, leaving us with six unfilled seats. We are currently seeking representatives from Cragmont, Emerson, Malcolm X, Longfellow, Willard, and Berkeley High. If you or someone you know may be interested, please reach out to your school principal. We have had three meetings already this school year. Our first meeting focused on orienting our many new members to the committee. At our second meeting, Lena Sweeney from Brea gave us a presentation on data from the 2324 school year. And we began discussing, or began discussion on establishing our priorities for the year. At our third meeting, we determined our three focus areas for the year and received a training and preparation for the upcoming federal program monitoring. Officially, the PAC is tasked with reviewing and monitoring the whole of the LCAP. As a group parent of volunteers, many of whom are encountering the LCAP for the first time, we recognize that we cannot adequately cover all of the LCAP's many actions in our limited meeting time. As in the past, we have decided to prioritize those actions that use LCFF supplemental dollars, which are targeted to our district's unduplicated students, those who'd qualify for free reduced lunch, foster youth, and English language learners. We also defer to D-LAC for actions that specifically target our multilingual language learners. After reviewing the PAC goals and the perspective from each of our school sites, the PAC has decided to further narrow our attention for this year on LCAP goals two, three, and four. And in particular, we are planning to focus our conversations on academic intervention, especially for our youngest students, working to catch them before they fall farther behind, making sure we are fully supporting historically disadvantaged students, and addressing barriers in the school-home connection. Our next meeting is tomorrow evening, and we are excited to move into the next phase of our work, digging into the first of our priority areas. We will be discussing LCAP Goal Four, Partnership and Engagement, with a presentation from the Office of Family Equity and Engagement and a discussion of what is going well and what needs improvement. I look forward to returning to update you on our progress throughout the remainder of the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, we will hear from our African-American Success Advisory Committee. And just to point out, Ms. Chavez, there is word missing from their title in the agenda, so if we can make sure that we correct that for the next meeting, that would be great. At this time, we will receive your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Director, Superintendent, and members of the Berkeley community. My name is Nicole Harris, and I am honored to serve on the Superintendent's African-American Success Advisory Committee, AASAC. I'm excited to provide a brief update centered around the guiding question, "Cassera and Jera, Are the Children Well?" Last Saturday, I had the privilege alongside fellow AASAC member Lorraine Gaskin to attend the 16th Annual African-American Regional Educational Alliance, ARIA, Professional Development Summit at Cal State East Bay. It was inspiring to see the Superintendent and Board President Brown, as well as several BUSD teachers and administrators in attendance. The summit had a clear and focused mission: How can school systems create environments where African-American students and families thrive? One session that resonated with me focused on how parents can support their children in special education. As the Board has discussed extensively through the CIM for SIG work, we recognize the Oprah representation of African-American students in BUSD's special education population. This session offered valuable perspectives and practical strategies that I believe can inform our work moving forward. I want to take the opportunity to thank the Board and Superintendent for their ongoing support of AASAC's capacity-building efforts. I encourage you to continue nurturing this partnership even as we navigate challenging budget times. The facilitated support provided to AASAC has been invaluable in helping us better understand how to collaborate effectively with BUSD. We are encouraged by our efforts across the district, such as Longfellow's PTA support in sending a group of teachers to the Professional Development Summit. This is a powerful example of how school communities can contribute to district-wide goals. Thank you for your time and attention this evening. AASAC stands ready and committed to collaborating with you to develop the best academic, social, emotional, and college career action plans for our African-American students.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening. At this time, we will move on to union comments. Ms. Chavez, do we have any union comments?
President Brown, there's one more committee, the District Safety Committee.
Oh, thank you very much. District Safety, we will receive your committee comments at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board and Superintendent Ford Mortell. My name is Rebecca Levinson. I'm the mother of a junior. And I'm also the Chair of the District Wide Safety Committee. I also sit on the Berkeley High School Safety Committee. And there's some lessons learned from the Berkeley High School Safety Committee that are essential to center in the development of our new district-wide committee, so we can avoid repeats of what hasn't worked so well. Full transparency, the BHS Safety Committee has been a difficult committee, full of frustration. There is a tension between the administrators and the parents and the teachers and the staff. But as of our last meeting last night, I am hopeful that we're about to turn a corner. I've said this many times, G-Shack is an incredible example of what happens when committees trust each other, respect each other, and work together to make things best for students and staff. I believe every committee can be equally productive, supportive, and wonderful. And that's what I expect both for the Berkeley High Safety Committee and the District Wide Safety Committee. I believe in us, and we need each other more in this moment than we ever have, because every time we fight and turn our back on one another, they win. So let me cut to the chase. As it stands, the purview of the Safety Committee for Berkeley High School is to review what is a very much a boilerplate document. It includes things like how to evacuate in case of a fire, earthquake, what to do in the event of an active shooter, that kind of thing. But what's left out is prevention and a plan for the day-to-day risks and safety concerns that we can solve for. And that's what's so frustrating to the committee. We don't need the nitty-gritty of the day-to-day to be put in the big boilerplate plan, but we do want to have an active safety plan separate from our boilerplate, such that we can make our community safer. You heard just this evening about what's happening with the homeless encampment outside of Berkeley High. And if you follow the news, you'll know again this year. We had guns on campus, and that piqued the attention of our committee. But there's no real forum to discuss these things that are, of course, first and foremost in our minds. We have asked to do surveys of teachers, staff, and students to understand from their perspective where the rubber meets the road on the safety front, so we can solve for some of these problems. The response we get back from the district and the administration is that when we ask to do site-specific surveys, that Berkeley Unified will be using the California Kids Survey, the Chicks Survey, that looks at safety. And there's nothing wrong with that survey. It's great to have more issues and understand sort of general things, more data, better. But the problem is it doesn't solve for the homeless encampment outside of BHS or the fact that on the GNH side of the buildings, those are essentially open doors for people to get into our buildings at 3:40 in the afternoon, because we put nearly all of our safety officers on the quad to clear students at the end of the day. Why is this a problem? It's because we've had kids jumped in the bathroom in the GNH building at 3:40 in the afternoon. We've also brought up the fact, according to our safety plan, we're supposed to have an administrator on campus or an administrator's designee on campus. We have no administrative coverage for zero period or in the late afternoon and early evening. Why does this matter? Because on Monday afternoon at around 5:30, we had two folks who looked to be from the homeless encampment wandering around our campus. This is also especially disturbing, given the sexual assault you heard about from the student G-Shack members. I learned about this on my way to a Berkeley High Development Group meeting on Monday night, and I ran into folks who were talking about it. We've been told as a committee, we are not allowed to write anything into the safety plan that's connected to dollars. Currently, we know we have carryover from our BSET funds, and we have some low-hanging fruit that we could be using these dollars for. For example, we have situations where we have dead spots in our buildings where radios don't work, cell phones don't work. These are places where sexual assaults have occurred in the past on campus. We could solve for that. I've got 49 seconds left. There's a lot of stuff, and I appreciate all of you for what you do. There's stuff that's right here that we could do tomorrow to make things better. And as a district-wide safety committee, I hope we take lessons learned from Berkeley High and think about creating little safety committees for each and every site so that we can solve for things like an unsafe drop-off at BAM or an unsafe drop-off at Cragmont. Safety is so much bigger than what our big boilerplate safety plan looks at. So I appreciate your time, and thank you so much. Good evening.
Thank you for your comments. I don't believe that there are any more committee comments, and so we will move to union comments.
I don't believe there are any union comments this evening, President Brown.
No union comments this evening. Okay, thank you. At this time, we will move to Board Member comments. Director Corn, if you're ready, I'm gonna ask that you go first, just to give Director Garcia a little bit of time to prepare if she needs it. And then after you, we'll go to Director Garcia, followed by Director Vasudev, and then Vice President Chang, okay?
Sure. Thanks, President Brown. Happy Black History Month, everyone. I am very excited about all of the Black History events and learning opportunities in our schools this month, focused on uplifting and celebrating the many accomplishments and contributions to our nation and our lives from the Black community. I hope to attend some events at our schools, and I've ordered myself a Berkeley High Black Student Union hoodie that I am very excited for. And of course, even as we honor and acknowledge the brilliance of our Black children, families, educators, and community members, we also acknowledge that our collective work for equity and social justice remains unfinished and indeed very clearly urgent. On another note, another joyful, positive, happy note, our Disability Awareness Month just concluded. And I don't know if anyone else attended the fantastic panel last week of students and educators who talked about the ways that their disabilities impact them and shared with us about how our schools can better support students and staff with a range of different disabilities. The panel was inspiring, and I hope that everyone will take time to watch the video and learn from our courageous students and staff. Alongside the joy, I think we also have to acknowledge the harm and the fear that is being experienced by many members of our community. Tonight, I want to highlight our commitments to some members of our community who are particularly vulnerable. Tonight, we will be passing our reaffirmed and strengthened resolution protecting our undocumented students and families. I am proud to cosponsor this resolution with Director Vasudev and to stand in solidarity with our immigrant communities. On that note, I am also very much looking forward tonight to hearing an update on our multilingual master plan, which is a key piece of our support for the academic growth and achievement of our immigrant and multilingual learner students. Another student group that is currently under fierce attack from the federal government is our LGBTQ+ community, particularly our transgender and our gender expansive students. While the federal government attempts to erase transgender and gender expansive people, I want everyone to know in no uncertain terms that our policies and practices to affirm every student's gender expression, protect all students from hate-motivated behaviors, and ensure that our schools are humanizing, affirming, responsive, and safe are not changing. I want to read a statement that was put out, I think just yesterday, by our state Attorney General. He said, "California will continue to create a welcoming environment for all students, including transgender and gender non-conforming students. The federal government sets a floor, not a ceiling, when it comes to civil rights protections. And California law has always provided additional protections beyond those that exist at the federal level. Those protections remain firmly in place. The right to equality in education and equal protection under the law is guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution." California's constitution sets its own separate and strong standards that clearly establish transgender and gender non-conforming individuals as a protected class. The Attorney General continued, "I want to emphasize that California law remains unchanged. We will not be frightened or cowed by the president's threats. We will not abandon our values. And we certainly will have no part in executing the president's agenda." And on that note, I would just like to end by thanking D-LAC, G-Shack, PAC, the A-SAC, the Safety Committee Representatives, who came out tonight to share with us what you're working on in your committees. I look forward to more discussion of the Longfellow Facility Concerns and Workforce Housing Construction Plans during tonight's facilities presentation. I appreciate the feedback about nutrition education, CalSTRS investment practices, the Bridge Program, and gun violence prevention, and I look forward to all the work we're gonna do tonight.
Thank you, Director Corn. Student Director Garcia.
Unfortunately, I don't have any outside information outside of myself. Very sorry. But I'm Alicia Garcia. I am one of the student representatives for Berkeley Technology Academy. I'm an 11th grader, and I joined because I felt that BTA didn't have a very big part in, I don't know, I felt as if BTEC didn't have a very big part in BUSD. And I never hear about BTEC in really anything. I thought that just because it's a smaller school, it doesn't deserve any less attention than Berkeley High. A little nervous, sorry. I'd like my interests to lie in your hands, and as I get into the swing of things, I'd like to keep an open mind and listen to anything that anyone would like to tell me. I will always try to advocate for everyone else, along with myself and others that attend my school. Thank you.
That was perfect. Student Board Director Garcia, thank you for taking the time to introduce yourself and share your interests. We're happy to have you and happy to support you here, okay? Director Vasudev, I believe you're next.
Great. Thank you, President Brown. I just wanted to thank Alicia and Evelyn so much for being here tonight. On behalf of BTEC, on behalf of our students, you know, school board directors, all of us here are elected to serve you guys and to make sure that you have access to an excellent public education. And so the fact that you're here, making sure that we're doing that, holding us accountable, and elevating the issues from your campus is incredibly important to us. It helps us do our job better. So I know you're taking time away from your studies to be here, and we're so grateful and so honored that you're here. So thank you. And with that, I want to thank everybody else who came out tonight to give public comment. I especially want to thank our students and parents who express your concerns about safety at BHS. And thank our superintendent for following up closely with our city leaders to ensure that they're doing everything that they can to create safe conditions at the encampment. There's a lot of things that I think, people think that we hold the key to making sure that we're like the only ones creating a culture of safety for our students, but it's not always the case. In this situation, we do really need to work closely with our city partners. In situations where there's traffic safety issues, you do have to work closely with your city to make sure that there are responsible land use decisions being made. that there are responsible land use decisions being made around schools. And so those partnerships are key. We have a committee called the Two by Two Committee of the Board. I don't know how many members of the public know that, but that's where two school board directors and two city council members come together to work on these issues of mutual interest where our work kind of intersects. So I definitely hope that some of these issues are being addressed there at a deeper level. I know that the superintendent is updates the community at these kind of broader meetings, but that's really where we work on the nitty gritty. So for my colleagues that serve on the Two by Two, I know that some of you are going to be bringing these issues to that committee. And the counterpart to the superintendent, which is the city manager, holds a lot of the keys into how to work collaboratively on the tactical decisions that need to be made to make sure that we're all responsible for creating a culture of safety around our schools. And so I know that's work that our superintendent does, whether she's at the Two by Two or not. She has a collaborative relationship with our city manager. But I just want the public to kind of know how those decisions are made. And I also want to thank just the Longfellow parents that came to talk about the construction issues. I'll follow up with facilities to see how we can best address those. Also want to thank the D-LAC committee members who came to give public comment. We don't hear from D-LAC very often, so it was really nice for me and very informative to hear some of the feedback about how to create more awareness of the special education resources for our English learners. I think this is something that also is important for our Black families, too. Many times when it comes to special education and special education advocacy, I don't see a lot of families of color in those spaces. And I think there is a gap on... And I would say that we do a great job as a district, not always in special education. I will say that. But like that we do try to do a great job in making sure that the resources are available to our families, but we can do a better job at making sure that they're culturally responsive and available to our most vulnerable families because they're very difficult to navigate. In general, I think special education can be a very complicated subject for any parent. But I think making sure that we have, you know, information in multiple languages. I know that on our website, we have information about DRADEF and other community-based organizations that really work more closely with parents and have multilingual support on special education issues, making sure that that information is shared more broadly, especially with our D-LAC committee. That seems to be a gap. So thank you because I wasn't aware of that gap. So I really appreciate the comments tonight. I also echo the superintendent's comments and my colleagues' comments around the celebration for Black History Month. We're excited to take this time to focus on the rich history and contributions of the Black community in our lives and in all of our campuses. So I'm very excited to celebrate that in our schools this month. And I also want to echo the gratitude for the BHS students who led the wonderful panel on disability awareness. I learned a lot. I was watching it with my son who's neurodiverse, and I think it was really empowering for him just to hear other students share their stories. I think the student part was really important and also just how we can better support invisible disabilities in the classroom. I think there was a lot of really great practical advice. And I know that it took a lot of courage for the students to be there and to share something so very personal. So I just want to applaud the BHS students that were there. Thank you so much for being there and for opening your hearts, really, with our community and telling us how we can do better. I also want to remind the community about the Caminos a la Universidad event on the 22nd of February. It's an event for our middle schoolers and high schoolers who want to learn more about how to get ready to go to college. There will be lots of resources there from BCC, from the district, from UC Berkeley. And although the conference will be held in Spanish, there's also English interpretation. So both languages will be there if anyone is curious to check it out. And I hope that the flyer has been also shared with our D-LAC families who might be interested in this event. I also share Director Corn's concerns for our LGBTQ community right now in light of the hateful comments coming from the federal government. But as our attorney general stated, our protections at the state and local level for our LGBTQ students remain strong and unchanged in California. And I know that I and many of my colleagues will do everything that we can to make sure that our LGBTQ students feel safe and protected and feel a strong sense of belonging in our campuses. Our commitment to equity and diversity and inclusion does not change at BUSD. I'm excited today that we'll vote on the resolution reaffirming the board's commitment to making BUSD campuses a safe zone for students and families threatened by ICE and that we're going to align better with the city of Berkeley and their resolution as a sanctuary city. I pulled this item today from the consent calendar. I know some people are not going to stay till the end of the meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that I covered this really quickly right now. Is that I know I pulled the item because I want to make sure that BUSD can also support in the same way that the city of Berkeley has already stated their support for Senate Bill 48, which is called Safe Access to Schools, and one of the provisions of the resolution. Now, Senate Bill 48 would prevent an LEA and its staff from granting ICE officer permission and access to school campuses without a judicial warrant at the state level. So right now, we're putting in our resolutions at a very hyper local level, district by district. But so it's not piecemeal. This is a Senate bill that will happen, you know, for the whole state. And that's why it's important that we send a letter of support. Also, in addition to that, SB 48, Senate Bill 48, would establish a one-mile radius around a school site where California law enforcement agencies will be prohibited from collaborating with or providing any information about a pupil, a pupil's family and household, school employee, or teacher to any immigration authorities regarding any immigration enforcement action. And that becomes really important because oftentimes, you know, if you're undocumented and you're dropping off, you know, a lot of the times you could be an essential worker. You could be walking your child to school or walking your child from the bus. And if that's within a one-mile radius of a school, we want to make sure that that's also part of the protected zone, that it's not just when you reach the school campus, but it's within that one-mile radius. And so those are the things that I think it's important to also include as part of our resolution support for that state bill so that this happens statewide. And I'm thrilled that that Senate bill is being sponsored by our Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman, and his staff has requested support from BUSD. So I'm very excited that we're going to have that discussion. And with that, I look forward to our conversation about facilities, about the multilingual plan, and thank you all for coming tonight.
Vice President Chang.
Thanks so much, President Brown. And also thank you, Directors Corn and Vasudev, and Student Director Alicia Garcia. Good evening. Thank you for all of your voices again today, and happy African American Heritage Month. Of course, welcoming to our board Student Director Alicia Garcia as well and her alternate Evelyn Velazcos. I know these are challenging times, but I also know that we will stand up for Berkeley values and that as a district, we will continue to provide not only equitable and accessible programs and services, but also non-disrupted programs and services. On the board, we, of course, will continue to effectuate these basic standards and principles through the many committees that we do our work through. At this moment in time in particular, you know, we want to let our LGBTQ students and Dreamer students know that they have our allyship and our support in our community. And please do continue to press on your officials, both within and outside of Berkeley. Thank you so much for all the students who came out and spoke and the teachers and the parents on concerns across safety with regard to ongoing modernization efforts. And of course, we are listening and taking these seriously while also ensuring that you have world-class facilities in this district. In addition, you know, we are hearing concerns around safety around the park, and that's something that is of concern, I think, to all of us. And working with our city partners is very, very critical to ensure that the ongoing safety issue that has manifested in a recent incident does not perpetuate. Thanks so much for your advocacy on that. And I'm sure I'm missing folks, and I just want to be cognizant of the time. And thanks again. I know that we're going through challenging times, but we are in this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Chang. Again, happy Black History Month, everyone. And those who know me know that this is absolutely one of my favorite months to celebrate. It is so important that we pause, celebrate, and remember the contributions of Black and African American people to this country and beyond. And so again, happy Black History Month. As always with my students, I embark on a really, really important project where we focus on African Americans who've made major contributions in the fields of innovation and science and mathematics. And so I'm very, very excited that we are finally here in this month. This month for me this year feels a little bit different than it has in years past for various reasons. But one of the most obvious reasons is because of the threat to our country and the consistent threats of racism and the consistent threats of racism towards Black people on every single level in the United States of America. And so this year, I'm going to celebrate a little bit harder as we continue to fight against the challenges that continue to plague our community and that we have to face each and every single day. I'd like to pause and thank Vice President Chang as well as our District Title IX Coordinator, yes, Mina Vteskic, who... The three of us spent a number of hours last week updating our student records policies, which you all will see listed on tonight's agenda for information. And it was really important to us that we do the work that we need to do to ensure our students remain safe in Berkeley Unified School District. And that can be done in a number of ways. First, through our resolution that you'll hear tonight, but also in our policy. We know that our policy work is the legal document that protects our school district. And so I want to thank Vice President Chang for his partnership on those documents and encourage my board colleagues to please govern yourselves accordingly so that when it is brought back to the agenda as a consent item, we can happily move those items. So thank you again for that. Additionally, I'd like to thank Associate Superintendent Hogan Dyke as well as Principal Tom for your work on our policies, supporting our adult school education. And you will also see those listed for information this evening. Again, another warm welcome to Student Director Garcia. She did want us to let you all know that she had to step out. It is always our custom to let our student board directors leave at an appropriate hour because they are still students, and their first responsibility is to ensure that they are ready and prepared for the great education that they get in BUSD the very next day. And so we were able to dismiss her, but we're so happy that she is joining our Board of Education. Superintendent Formorcelle addressed it in her public, in her superintendent comments earlier, but she, along with myself, Principal Regosa, as well as Associate Superintendent Kalis, attended a very important meeting today with Councilmember Igor, Mayor Ishi, City Clerk Paul, our wonderful police chief, and other folks within the city so that we can address the very concerns that were raised tonight during public comment, the concerns that were raised during last night's Safety Committee, and the concerns that have been raised not just this week and last week, but in prior weeks and prior months and even in prior years regarding the safety around Berkeley High School and our greater community. We know and understand that we are a part of our, a part of a community that sometimes happens to be shared spaces. And although that may be true, our number one concern is that in every single space that they occupy, our students are safe and feel safe. And so I really appreciated meeting with them today, where we didn't just discuss what couldn't happen or what would take a long time to happen, but we really focused in on prioritizing the safety of our students. From this evening's meeting, to me, the greatest outcome is that we will have more safety patrol around Berkeley High and the park area. And so I'm grateful for the partnership from our police department, who will work to ensure that our students are safe in that way. There are, there will be a town hall meeting that will be open to the public. So please stay on the, please be on the lookout for that information that will be distributed throughout the district. We want to continue to hear from families, and we want you all to continue to hold us accountable and share with us and partner with us in regards to best practices around safety. And so there will be an opportunity to do that with not just your Berkeley High School and Berkeley Unified School District leaders, but with our city leaders as well. And so we know that this is the first of many meetings that we will hold together to make sure that our students are safe, not just because of this incident, but because we know that there are other safety concerns that happen throughout the year and other safety concerns that happen on other campuses. And so our hope is that we will continue to address those in collaboration and in support of each other. Congratulations to our newest hires for our schools, the Vice President of Longfellow Middle School, as well as, the Vice Principal, excuse me, of Longfellow Middle School, as well as the Principal of Willard Middle School. We are the interim principal, excuse me, of Willard Middle School, while our principal is on paternity leave. And so we're so excited to have you all join our community in this way and rejoin our community in a different way. We know that your support to our schools will really help support our students and our overall Berkeley community. And so welcome. We're very excited to have you and excited to work with you. Finally, I'd like to thank the, all of the comment, all of the committee commenters that commented tonight. And I'd like to just highlight the comments that were made by the African American Success Committee regarding the 16th Annual Area Professional Development Summit. I had a wonderful, wonderful time attending that summit. I always love to go because there I can put on my board member hat and then take it off, put on my educator hat and then take it off, put on my advocacy hat and take it off. And so it was nice to be able to be in a space where I could do all three. That doesn't always happen in all of our spaces, but that definitely happens for me at the Professional Development Summit. I am really happy that many of our community members in Berkeley Unified School District were also able to attend that summit, to learn from the summit and to work in collaboration with each other as we plan for the success of our African American students, family, faculty, and staff. I'd like to give a major shout out to Mr. Kamara Nguyen, who facilitated that conversation with representatives from BUSD. And thank you for your leadership and your outstanding facilitation skills. Finally, I am excited about all of our agenda items tonight, but again, want to raise item 14.2, our resolution up this evening. We know that there's been a lot of work that has been done by both Director Corn and Director Vasudev in partnership with Latinos Unidos, in partnership with our mayor, in partnership with our city council, as well as various groups and other community leaders. And so we are excited that this is coming to us tonight. Berkeley is a place of many firsts, including being the first identified city to be a sanctuary city, as well as continuing to be a leader in making sure that our schools are safe places for our students. And so thank you again for your work on this. Happy to support this and can't wait for us to finally get to the action item to affirm, support, and approve this evening's resolution. This ends my public comments for tonight. And so we will now move on to, excuse me, we will now move on to the approval of our consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent calendar?
I move to do so.
It has been moved by Vice President Chang. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Vasudev. Ms. Chavez, can you please call the roll?
Director Corn. Hi. Director Vasudev? Yes. Vice President Chang?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. Our consent calendar is approved for this evening. We will, excuse me. We will now move on to our first agenda item tonight, which is on our multilingual learner master plan. Back in 2022, the multilingual learner master plan was a byproduct of a collaboration between Berkeley Unified School District's educational partners such as D-LAC, our site leaders, our teachers, our ELD teachers, students, parents, and community members. And this plan was built on Berkeley Unified School District's 2013 Master Plan for English Learners and has aligned with our school district, and has aligned our school district with the California Department of Education Guidelines and the California English Learner Roadmap. So tonight, we will receive a presentation from our BUSD staff that will provide an update on our that will provide an update on our current multilingual learner master plan. And staff will review each of the goals identified in our plan, as well as share progress for the goals, progress that BUSD has made towards reaching our goals. So, at this time, I'm very happy to welcome our presentation for our Multilingual Learner Master Plan. You may proceed whenever you are ready.
Thank you, President Brown, and really appreciate that excellent orientation to the Multilingual Learner Master Plan. My name is Jill Hogan-Dyke. I'm the Associate Superintendent, and I'm joined here by Director Chris Albeck and our ELD TSA, Ms. Kathleen Marte. We're excited to be here this evening and want to make sure that we anchor this presentation in our district's mission to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. Our diverse student body includes almost 600 multilingual language learners representing just over 40 different languages. The predominant language at about 50% of those multilingual language learners is Spanish. Approximately 300 of our English learners speak Spanish, followed by our Arabic population at 9.5%. BUSD did approve our multi, our current multilingual learner master plan in December of 22, 2022, through collaboration between our BUSD educational partners such as the D-LAC, who you heard from this evening, our site leaders, teachers, ELD teachers, and other community partners. We are excited to share the work to support our multilingual learners, and tonight, we will highlight some of the actions we have taken and the data we are seeing across the six goals in the Multilingual Learner Master Plan. So, we also want to make sure that as we engage in this conversation, we recognize the intersections between the Multilingual Learner Master Plan and our LCAP goals that you see there on the left and our strategic action pillars that you see there on the right. Many of our goals in the Multilingual Learner Master Plan are really aligned with academic excellence and equitable outcomes for our students, which is also embedded in our LCAP goals, number one and number two. And we have a component of our multilingual learner master plan that includes parent engagement and partnership. It's also important to know that there are intersections with our Latinx Resolution. And as we move through the highlights on the goals in this presentation, well, you'll see some callouts with that alignment on some of the slides. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Albeck.
Alrighty. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, BUSD Board of Education and Superintendent. I share with you the structure of this evening's presentation is to review our multilingual learner master plans agreed upon goals in order to evaluate in progress and performance of these goals. As you will hear, we will acknowledge progress, share artifacts of accomplishments, and also identify areas of future improvement and development. What we in BUSD do believe in continuous improvement and know that our work to produce more equitable outcomes for our multilingual learners, as Director Corn said, tonight is unfinished. So, our first goal focuses on ensuring that our multilingual learners develop full receptive and productive proficiencies in English within five to seven years of receiving ELD services as measured through our summative LPAC. We've seen steady progress towards English language proficiency reflected in the increased percentage of students making gains on the LPAC, as seen on the slide before you, from our state's accountability dashboard. We attribute this growth to strengthen designated ELD instruction and curriculum implementation across all sites, ensuring consistent language development opportunities are embedded in daily instruction. In addition to our LPAC data, our key metric to use to track this progress is our English Learner Progress Indicator, ELPI, which measures how effectively students are advancing towards English proficiency. The ELPI data shows the percentage of multilingual learners who are making at least one level of growth year over year. This year, our ELPI data reflects notable growth in several areas. We've seen an increase in the percentage of students progressing at least one proficiency level, indicating that our instructional strategies, particularly the implementation of designated and integrated ELD in our classrooms, are having a positive impact. In addition to ELPI, we are closely monitoring reclassification data, which reflects the number of students who have met the criteria to be reclassified as fluent English proficient or ARFEP. This data is critical because it demonstrates not just language growth, but also academic readiness for success without designated ELD supports. This year, we've observed positive trends in reclassification rates, with an increase in the number of students meeting criteria for reclassification. This growth suggests that our efforts to strengthen language instruction are translating into measurable academic outcomes. Moving forward, one area of our focus to address is around the variability in both ELPI growth and reclassification rates across school sites. While some schools are making significant growth, others require more targeted professional development to enhance designated and integrated ELD practices, particularly in our secondary classrooms, where we know language development is embedded within a complex content areas. So, that was something that we will continue to focus on moving forward into this next year.
Goal number two of our multilingual learner master plan is academic success. English learners are taught highly rigorous academic content that enables them to meet performance standards consistent with all those of all students. One of the key ways we are addressing this goal is by continuing to expand our constructing meaning program, which is instructional support for integrated ELD throughout the day. This year, we provided a five-day constructing meaning institute to our GE elementary school teachers and a four-day training to our GE secondary teachers, as you can see on the slide there. Many teachers share that this is the most valuable PD they have ever participated in and appreciate that the strategies benefit all of our students. This was our first year implementing district-level constructing meaning PD for our elementary teachers. At the training, I, after, sorry, after the training, I had the opportunity to observe various English Language Arts lessons incorporating constructing meaning in action. The students consistently use the program resources and tools, such as the academic discussion cards seen in the middle of the slide. And they have sentence frames for presenting an idea, supporting your thinking, challenging an idea, et cetera. As part of our work to expand the constructing meaning program, we will be sending a small group of elementary school teachers to EL Chiefs Summer Leadership Institute. This will be the first step in creating our team of elementary trainer of trainers. This, we can then develop our own constructing meaning institutes at the elementary level, as we do already do at the high school. This ensures that we have PD that is tailored to the needs of our teachers and students and is more cost-effective. Next slide. This year, we continue our multidisciplinary approach to enable and inspire the academic success of our multilingual learners with learning differences. Some special ed case managers and district TSAs have participated in constructing meaning institute to be able to support general education teachers with inclusion during tier-one instruction and to integrate the strategies with their own tier-two and tier-three instruction. In addition, all special ed case managers and TSAs have participated in collaboration meetings on how to best serve our duly identified students, which are our multilingual learners with IEPs, and also discuss students with 504 plans. During the meetings, we review all of the various accessibility resources that are provided when taking the CAS and the LPAC. Providing students with the appropriate accessibility resources while taking the assessments is key to them being able to demonstrate their skills and knowledge to the best of their abilities. Last but not least, for goal number two, academic success, we'd like to highlight the achievement of our ARFEP students, which are students who have met all the reclassification criteria and have exited the ELD program. This graph shows how our ARFEP students performed last year on the ELA and Math CAS. As you can see, the blue bar indicates that our students performed at 59%, performed at meeting the benchmark or above in the English Language Arts, and 52% are meeting the benchmark or above in math. Notably, these scores are above the percentages of all students at the county level in red and the state level in orange of both subjects. This data combined with our data on the English Language Proficiency Indicator and reclassification rates demonstrate that BUSD is making much progress towards effective programs and services for our multilingual learners and ARFEP students.
Goal three emphasizes creating safe, welcoming, and inclusive environments for our multilingual families, recognizing that strong family engagement is critical to student success. Our work with the D-LAC, as you heard from Osgay tonight, has been a key driver in strengthening family partnerships and ensuring that our multilingual learner voices are central to decision-making here in BUSD. Our D-LAC played an important role in developing of last year's three-year LCAP, particularly in shaping items related to our multilingual learners. Their collaboration helped to ensure that family perspectives were embedded in the goals, actions, and metrics designed to support multilingual learners, reflecting a shared vision for equity and academic excellence. Through this process, D-LAC members provided feedback on strategies to improve language development support, family engagement practices, and academic outcomes for multilingual learners. They also helped identify gaps in services, advocating for resources that address both the academic and socio-emotional needs. This partnership with our D-LAC not only strengthened our LCAP, but it also empowered our D-LAC members to see that their input reflected in district priorities, deepen their connection to the educational purposes, both when we were able to support and make things happen and also when we were not. Of significant importance that occurred in our last LCAP is our new focus on long-term English Language Learners LTALs, a critical area identified through both data analysis and D-LAC advocacy. Recognizing that the LTAL requirement in our new LCAP, we are committed to implementing targeted supports that address the unique needs of students who have been classified as English Language Learners for six or more years in BUSD, an area of growth and focus for BUSD moving forward. In addition to our work with D-LAC, we've streamlined family communications through Elevation, which allows us to send clear multilingual learner family notification letters, making important information more accessible to families and caregivers. And also, this year, to deepen family engagement, we've developed family educational videos that are easily accessible via flyers with QR codes, providing parents and guardians with support of their child's education at home in ways that are engaging and convenient for them. With, while communication tools have improved, we recognize the need to create more interactive opportunities for families. Moving forward, we continue to focus on expanding in-person workshops and community events that foster two-way communication. These strategies ensure that families are not just informed, but are actively engaged, strengthening the partnership between home and school for our multilingual learner success. Goal four focuses on preparing all of our multilingual learners to be college and career-ready, ensuring that they have the academic skills, support, and opportunities needed for post-secondary success. Our data shows that 8.3% increase in graduation rates for multilingual learners last year, reflecting our district's commitment to supporting students through the completion of high school. However, it is important to recognize that while graduation rates are high, there is a critical distinction between graduations and meeting the A through G requirements necessary for admission to California's public and universities. This distinction highlights the need to not only support our students in earning a diploma, but also to ensure they are academically prepared for college. To address this, BUSD provides programs such as Avid Excel, Puente, Bridge, and Rise, which provides targeted academic support and college readiness skills. We've also strengthened partnerships with Berkeley City College, offering dual enrollment opportunities where students can earn college credits while also in high school and with Youth Works this year, connecting students with real-world career experiences in addition to our CTE pathways at the high school. Additionally, we've implemented a new process for evaluating high school transcripts from students' country of origin, allowing them to receive appropriate course credit, which supports both graduation and college readiness. Moving forward, our focus will be on closing the gap between graduation and A through G completion rates. This includes increasing access to rigorous coursework, providing targeted academic counseling, and ensuring that our multilingual learners receive the support needed to thrive, not just in high school, but in college and beyond.
Goal number five is implementation of instructional programs for multilingual learners with fidelity. The primary goal of monitoring is to ensure that every school in the district has effective and compliant programs for all multilingual learners. The six areas for federal program monitoring review of EL programs are involvement, governance and administration, funding, assessment and accountability, staffing and professional development, and equal educational access. I will highlight our work on a few of the EL items. Federal Program Monitoring EL Item 10 is reclassification. There are four criteria for students to meet reclassification, to fluen English proficient. For many years, BUSD has been using students' grades in English Language Arts to meet criterion two, which is teacher evaluation. To ensure that students are being considered for reclassification with equitable measures, we have started piling a new California Department of Education tool called the OPTAL, Observation Protocol for Teachers of the English Learners. Now, teachers can observe students' performance in the class and use the rubric to determine if a student's expressive and receptive language skills are fully developed to engage in grade-level content to meet the reclassification criterion two. EL Item 4.4 is enhanced instructional opportunities for immigrant students. Last year, after completing a needs assessment and piloting various curriculum designed to meet the specific needs of our newcomer students, we purchased new supplementary programs, which teachers have started implementing this year. Two of the programs focus on listening, speaking, reading, and writing and follow a sculpted sequence of grammar and vocabulary for targeted language instruction for TK through 12th grades. We also purchased leveled text to replace the books that were designed for TK through second graders. These libraries provide more dignity to our secondary newcomer students with their age-appropriate themes and images. We have identified an area of growth under EL Item 15, access to a standard instructional program. We are currently looking at our newcomer programs to make sure that students are in the sheltered classes only short term. All multilingual learners at LPAC levels three and four should transition to the mainstream general education classes to receive a standard instructional program. With our constructing meaning program, multilingual learner students can receive the language support they need and have fluent English proficient peers serve as models, in addition to their designated ELD classes. Director Albeck and I are supporting the Berkeley High School Multilingual Learner Program Leadership Team to improve the structure and the entrance and exit criteria for the NLP next year. We're excited about the work we are doing in continuous improvement of our newcomer program.
Our last goal focuses on ensuring that students in our Spanish TWI Two-Way Immersion Program develop full bilingualism and biliteracy in Spanish by the end of middle school with the opportunity to pursue the state seal of biliteracy in high school. This year, our data shows an encouraging number of students earning the seal of biliteracy, highlighting the success of our TWI program and fostering high levels of English language proficiency and academic achievement in both Spanish and in English. To support this growth, we've also expanded family workshops that engage families of understanding biliteracy pathways, offering resources to help families support language development at home and navigate the steps toward earning the seal. In alignment with our commitment to strengthening biliteracy, we've implemented the Mendez Spanish Language Arts Curriculum Adoption Process as a parallel process to our English Language Arts Adoption Process. This ensures that our TWI students at our primary level will continue to receive rigorous, standards-aligned instruction grounded in the science of reading in Spanish that mirrors the quality and expectations of our piloting English curriculum. The adoption of a new Spanish Language Arts Curriculum at Mendez will define a coherent instructional framework that fits the support of our language acquisition model, promoting literacy development across both languages and enhancing the academic rigor of our TWI program. Looking ahead, we will continue to strengthen the articulation between elementary, middle, and high school TWI programs. We started that work last year with four collaborations between Mendez and Longfellow, but we recognize the need to continue, especially into the high school. Our focus remains on expanding access to biliteracy opportunities, supporting families, and increasing the number of students who graduate with the state seal of biliteracy. As we conclude this presentation, we would like to share several recommendations to modify the- to modify the existing language in our multilingual learner master plan. These recommendations are being made based on the new guidance from CDE and regional county-level networks of best practice. First, as a result of new CDE guidance, TK students will now be exempt from taking the initial ALPAC. As it's been deemed developmentally inappropriate, they'll be accessed in kindergarten instead. Second, designated ELD will continue to be required with flexibility. Schools will integrate it as part of a Tier One instruction to better meet the students' language proficiency levels. For our newcomer program, eligibility now aligns with CDE definition, serving students enrolled in U.S. schools for less than three years. Course offerings will focus on students with English proficiency levels one through two, as these programs are meant to be short-term supports. Finally, to support equity, students with disabilities may receive now may receive domain exemptions on the ALPAC if their disability prevents assessment in specific areas. We're asking the board to review these updates, and our recommendations will be placed on the consent calendar for our February 19th Board of Education meeting. Thank you, and we now have time for questions.
Thank you all so much for that wonderful, wonderful presentation. I know I have a number of questions, as well as my board colleagues, and so my board colleagues would allow. I'm going to begin with my number of questions first, and then whichever board colleague is available or ready to ask questions may follow. First and foremost, I want to start with the exciting presentation that was around goal number two for academic success. It is wonderful that Berkeley Unified School District is outperforming both the county as well as the state of California, and so I wanted to take a second to highlight that. I thought that that was really, really exciting, and I'm referencing our 23-24 ELA in math. Excuse me, math scores on the casp, so that was really, really exciting and important information. I have a question in regards to our college and career readiness slide that was presented tonight. First, I'm really, really grateful for programs like Avid and Bridge and Rise and Puente for the support that they are providing our students to get them A through G-ready. But I'd like to know what is or what more is needed to be done to address through curriculum and instruction our A through G readiness needs. So that's my first question, and then I have two more to follow up.
Sure. One component that stands out for me, Director President Brown, is that specifically around the guidance counseling and the support that our guidance counseling provides our multilingual learners, specifically our newcomers. And I know that at our high school, we already have additional resources specifically as it relates to family engagement and supporting our students. And as recently as last month, we were meeting with Vice Principal Coleman and the guidance counselor that is specifically responsible for the MLP, and just the insight that the guidance counselor has in ensuring that all of our multilingual learners who are also, but some of them are also newcomers, who are in potentially sheltered classes, are getting access to all A through G. I know is a significant responsibility, and it's a priority for our high school, and I've seen it in action. So I have a lot of faith in our high school, both at BTA and at BHS, that the focus really is on making sure that these students who are enrolled in these classes are also getting access to A through G.
Thank you. I'm really excited to hear about the guidance counselor's support. My question was around instruction, specifically Tier One instruction that is happening in the classroom.
The constructed meaning PD, do you want to talk about? Well, just related to instruction for English learner, for English learners.
I think, if I could make it easier, I think that this question, you know, although specific for English learners, I think that this may be a question that could really answer and address all of our learners, because we know that A through G requirements, meeting the A through G requirements is something that we continue to work towards and kind of struggle with a little bit, but work towards for all of our students. And so as we specifically talk about our multilingual learners tonight, I know that this answer will support all of our students. And so I'll ask again, what additional needs are there in regards to instruction and/or curriculum, but specifically instruction, to help support our students meeting the A through G requirements?
I'll offer a beginning, please. So the Berkeley High community specifically has completed their self-study for their WASC review, and I think one of the areas that surfaced through that self-study was a need to strengthen our assessment processes at the high school so that we are implementing some more regular screening assessments in order to make good instructional decisions. So new this year, all ninth and 10th graders are taking the STAR assessment. So as you all know, STAR assessment has been administered to students in grades three through eight. And so that is new to the Berkeley High community this year as it's implementing some structured processes to review those assessments at regular intervals so that we can make good decisions about what instructional supports our students need in their Tier One classrooms as well as in their support classrooms. So I think as we help and work alongside of the Berkeley High team to build and implement those stronger assessment routines, that's going to have an impact on the instruction that's happening in the classroom.
Thanks for that response. I know that oftentimes assessments are our first indicators. So it is really good to hear that that assessment schedule is being and will be implemented for our students. So thank you for that. Speaking of assessments, that brings me to my second question. First of all, I'm always so proud of our reclassification rates in Berkeley Unified School District and continue to remain proud of them after tonight's presentation. I did want to ask, I know that we spent some time talking about criteria two and criteria one as it relates to reclassification, but I know that criteria four is also incredibly important, as well as criteria three. Criteria three being parent consultation and taking parent consultation in as a way to support students who have scored an overall four on ALPAC, as well as criteria four, which identifies student scores on the S-Back as a way, S-Back and other assessments, as a way to measure their English language learner progress. How are we using our state assessments to, as evidence, to support reclassification?
We've made a lot of progress in this area. There was a few years ago, so for criteria four, it's the basic skills test where our multilingual learners have to perform on an assessment that all other students also take. And a few years ago, our students had to meet benchmark on both S-Back and the STAR, but now it's either S-Back or STAR. But in addition to that, we review all the data. We look at our students. And we look at the list of our students who have already met the first criteria, which is a four on the standard of ALPAC. And if they've gotten that, then we look at the other data. And if we have a student, for example, who has a two on the STAR but needs a three to get reclassified, we sit with the student and say, "Look, this is what you need to do. This is what you need to accomplish to get reclassified." That provides them with the extra motivation, because sometimes they can do better. They're just like, "Oh, another assessment." If they really understand the importance of the assessment, then they put in their extra effort, and we've found that this is their score from a two or three, for instance.
I think I would also add, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is an area that did come up with D-LAC in their recommendations, and I know that there has been intentionality in spending some of that D-LAC time to really review with families what students need to do in order to reclassify. There were a lot of questions that had come up from our families about what can we do and how can we support, and we've been sharing some of those as part of our D-LAC, regular D-LAC meetings.
Thank you both for that response. And then finally, I just want to give a shout out for the last slide that was shown as it relates to our seal of bili literacy. Historically, we have really been super proud of our, of our number of students who have received the seal, the state seal of bili literacy. And that's been something that was celebrated since I've been on the board and, of course, predates me. But to see the amazing number of, an increase of our students who are receiving the seal of bili literacy specifically in the 2023-2024 year is just absolutely phenomenal. And so I just want to pause and highlight that, and also shout out our students and our educators for the phenomenal work that they have done there. It is one thing to be able to speak one language, but to be able to speak multiple languages and to be literate in both of those languages is something to be celebrated. And so shout out to our students and to our families and to our educators for making that happen for so many of our students. Thank you. I'll pass it over to whoever is ready.
I'm ready. President Brown, this is Director Basadiv.
Okay, go right ahead.
Great. She's here. I can hear. I just want to thank you so much for your presentation and for highlighting a lot of the professional development that's been taking place since the implementation of the latest master plan. I know it's been a lot, and so I just want to really appreciate that. And also, I really appreciate Director Albeck's kind of like scrutiny on the data a little bit. Like, yes, the graduation rates are high, and yes, we score better on math and on ELA than, you know, than the county and than the state on our standardized testing. But when we dig, when we dig in, those numbers are still overall not great and focus on like those A through G requirements that we're setting up our English learners to be able to get into UCs and state schools. I had a couple of questions just about constructing meaning and how that's been explained to our EL families. And also, what does a professional development around that look like for administrators, for, you know, district leaders, so that we're all kind of on the same page of what integrated ELD looks like? What are the benefits of it? You know, like for your average family, how do they understand, like, you know, that? And then the second thing that I wanted to bring up, I love that there's information about the professional development on how to support duly-identified students. But as we heard from our D-LAC committee tonight, I think there's a lot of family members who might still not know what, you know, what special education resources are available to them. So maybe their students aren't yet duly-identified, have not yet entered the special education system, but want to understand more like what that means, because they might, their children might, it's not just a language issue, but they might have a learning difference that needs a little bit more support. And so how do we talk to our D-LAC members about that? Like, how to, and at the site level, how do we educate our English language learners just about special education in general to make sure that we're properly supporting their students? So there are two, constructing meaning for families and administrators and staff, and then the sped issues. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Basadiv. As it relates to constructing meaning and communication of the families, I think here in BUSD, we're very fortunate to have site-based ELD coordinators. And our site-based ELD coordinators not only work with our site ELACs, but also oftentimes run our site ELACs with their principals. So I know that these conversations come up, so similar to what Associate Superintendent Hogan-Dyke said as it relates to our work with the D-LAC and the reclassification process. These are also conversations that we're having with our D-LAC, and then we're with the support of our superintendent who, you know, sends our representatives back to the school site with homework to do. We do ask that our D-LACs bring information back. So in our D-LAC, we talk about constructing meaning. We talk about the importance of constructing meaning and how it actually plays out. And then that information goes back to site ELACs, which then gets distributed to families. But I also know that our ELD coordinators work closely with the families and share a little bit about, beyond just our time in our group with designated ELD, what does this look like when they're back in the class with Miss X or with Mr. V kind of thing, and can share those insights. So that stands out for me.
If there's like an easy one-pager, I would love to, I don't know if my board members want to see it, but I would love to see it just kind of how that's communicated to families in language that they can understand and that, you know, board members who are not educators can understand.
Yeah, we can get that to you.
Yeah, I just want to say, I really appreciate your question, because I remember when we were working on rewriting our multilingual learner master plan, that's one of the things that kept coming up was, you know, communication, communication. We want to understand as parents and families. And so, yeah, we're really working on providing information in a variety of ways, you know, through our ELACs and D-LACs, videos. I remember last year during D-LAC, we provided videos of students in classrooms using the designated ELD curriculum, for example, so they could see it in action. So it's really an area that we're working on. We still have a lot more to do, but it's a great question. And then in terms of the duly-identified, the question was about letting parents know?
Yeah, that there are these resources for duly-identified students and also just for parents, maybe their child has not yet entered special education, but they notice that, hey, it's not just like a language issue. Maybe they do have some kind of learning difference. I think just kind of based on the comments from the D-LAC committee tonight, it seems to be a gap that they might not even be aware that there are special education resources. So that overlap between English learners and special education, like before the students are identified, right? And before the educators are working with them, how do we inform parents of special education resources?
That's why I think it's important that we continue to discuss this population, no matter if we have a parent of a student with a disability in our ELAC, for example. And we have sort of like templates of slide presentations for ELACs and that all, so there's information that we're ensuring that all ELAC families are getting, and so we can make sure that they get information on how to, if they have a concern that they think their student might have a learning difference, what do you do? And so we could include that. We haven't yet, but it's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I mean, I'll just say for myself, speaking to English learners, there's a lot of stigma in different cultures around special education, right? And their children are entering a new system where the stigma is not there, the parents aren't used to the resources. There's just like a lot of hand-holding that goes into like helping a family understand that this is, this isn't a terrible thing, that there's different ways to learn, right? So there's this also like soft pitch that goes along with it, like understanding the cultural nuances of different backgrounds and how special education is treated within different cultural contexts. It's a hard thing, so I don't think it's like something very easy to do in a one-pager, but I think at least starting the conversation with D-LAC would be really powerful. Thank you.
I'll go next. At first, I just, I'm really grateful for this presentation and for all of the amazing work that you all are doing. I'm very excited to hear about constructing meaning in elementary schools. I think Kathleen and I were talking about that many years ago, the need for it. I agree with President Brown about the seal of bili literacy numbers being very exciting to see. Really happy to hear about the work to support dual-identified students, the focus on long-term English learners. I really appreciated the thinking about increasing two-way communication with families being an important goal. And I was happy to hear about the adoption process, really focusing on the needs of Menda specifically. I have two questions. One of them is about reclassification rates. I'm wondering if you can contextualize for us those rates? What's our goal, reclassification rate, and how are we doing, you know? How do we know whether, how will we know when we're doing a really great job with reclassification? And my second question is related to your very last slide where you were talking about changes to the EL master plan. I'm curious about the ramifications of not giving the ALPAC in TK? And does that mean anything for identifying TKers for ELD services? Like, what are the implications of that change? Thank you.
So as it relates to the change in initial ALPAC for TK, I want to make a point of clarification that we still are, it doesn't mean that we're not supporting TK students. So our TK students are still receiving designated ELD with our ELD coordinators. And that was a decision that we made because we believe that's the right thing to be doing. We don't, we shouldn't be waiting for, you know, We don't, we shouldn't be waiting for, you know, a student to take an assessment, to be termed, you know, something for them to get services that they need. So in regards to, in regards to services, no services will change. It does have an implication on, you know, how many students are identified as multilingual learners within a school site, which then sometimes translates into funding sources or staffing decisions. And I think that is something that we are working internally to make sure that we're both cognizant of and accounting for when we're making those staffing decisions, ensuring that we're making sure that those, those TK students are, are kept in mind.
And when you're identifying those kids to provide services, is it just based on their home language survey? Is it based on teacher's observation? Both? Yeah, okay.
And just in regard to reclassification, so as you know, we launched a three-year LCAP. So our baseline data for reclassification is 17%, so we're looking for a 3% increase. We, at the mid-year right now, we have about 16.7% of our students have reclassified. So we haven't quite hit last year's measure, but there's a lot of reclassification work that happens in the spring. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Firstly, I want to really congratulate your hard work and the obvious improvements and clear improvements. And really thank you for all that work that's been put in and your engagement with the community. I just have a, a quick comment and question that I think has been covered here with other board members as well. Just emphasize the importance again of duly identified students. And I really appreciate the goal to analyses here and the domains with the performance areas and the, in the listening, speaking, reading, writing, et cetera, with the performance areas that are covered here in the graphic. But also just the awareness and the knowledge that there are intersections here, particularly with duly identified students, which has been raised by D-LAC as well, and the type of outreach that's necessary to ensure those students have programs and services that are in the appropriate, both for their parents, for LEP parents who have access to the appropriate interpretation and translations for documents, et cetera, but also the students themselves who have that type of need. And in addition, I also want to flag and congratulate you on the 82.5% graduated rate. That sounds quite, quite high and quite good to me, with an increase of 8.3% with 63 students. So there's lots of good work going on. Of course, we always ask helpful, pointed questions towards constructive ends. And again, thank you for your hard work. Thanks. President Brown, I think we're all done with our comments and questions.
Yes, we are. Thank you all so much for your presentation this evening and for taking the time to address the questions that came from the board. We will now move on to item 14.1, which will, excuse me, be our facilities update. As many of you all know, in the community, we receive a facilities update periodically. And the purpose of the facilities update is to really highlight changes and also review and approve changes to the Measure G bond program. Tonight's update and presentation is to discuss with the Board of Education the necessary changes to the program to ensure that quality facilities are still constructed and maintained while the program remains fiscally solvent and bond funds continue to be drawn down in a way that protects the community's tax rate. So I'd like to invite Director Kalis as well as some new faces and some familiar faces to the board this evening for our much awaited facilities update. And take some time to say, to Director Kalis, um, excuse me, to Associate Superintendent Kalis, welcome back. We have definitely missed you and are so excited for this evening's presentation.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I'm joined here tonight with the team who pretty much manages the majority of our bond program. Many of you have met some, but not all, and I think there's a few who don't know them. So I am going to introduce them real quick. So to my left, we have Maurice Borden. Maurice is our new Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operations. He's been with the district for a little bit over three months now, definitely getting into it and really doing a great job. Directly to my right is Asia Evans, the District Safety and Risk Coordinator. That is part of facilities and Asia has actually been integral in helping us look at our projects and really understand how we can implement things that are for our safety projects, but also monitoring and watching any new OSHA regulations or things like that that come out. So I have her here tonight to talk about one of the projects. Sitting next to Asia is Kevin Wagner. Kevin is a program manager with Van Pelt Construction Services, who is our CM and PM firm. Kevin has over 41 years' experience in the construction industry. He joined our team about six or seven months ago as the program manager, as one of the two program managers for our overall project. And directly next to Kevin is Ashley Del Rio. Many of you might remember Ashley as really the savior of the summer, right? As I told you guys in August, had it not been for Ashley, there's absolutely no way we would have pulled off moving seven different facilities in two months' time, including multiple schools. Ashley is also a program manager with years in construction management, as well as school finance. So she really, she will cover the portion tonight that talks specifically about the bond funds and how we really run out our cash flow and things like that. So with that, I am going to pass it over to Maurice and he's going to open up the presentation.
Associate Superintendent, before you begin, thank you for taking the time to introduce all the staff who will present tonight. I failed to give the board a much-needed break. So I'm going to ask, since you already have begun, would you like to continue and find somewhere to pause in between your presentation? Or would you like to pause here so that the board can take a very quick break?
I think it's a perfect opportunity to pause. The evil inside me wanted to make him wait and sit through 30.
You and me too, you and me both, honestly.
A good opportunity, so go ahead.
Okay, we'll take, we'll take a little break. Thank you all. Please forgive me for forgetting to do that. So let's go ahead and take a quick break, folks, and then we'll come back and pick up where we left off. Thank you.
All right. Hopefully you all enjoyed your much-needed break. We are ready to pick up where we left off.
All right. Thank you, folks. Thank you for having us tonight. As John mentioned, I am Maurice Borden. I've been here three months. So I've figured out where the coffee machine is and I, I have had a chance to review the Measure G program and it was extremely exciting for me to review and I'm excited to participate in this. Tonight's agenda will cover the initial measure bond planning, which basically explains how the plan was created, the project review, summary of recommendations, project budget allocation highlights, including the workforce housing information update. The initial bond was created by the Superintendent's Bond Work Group. This group.
I know. Please, next slide, please. See, it's not just me.
I'm sorry.
Not just me.
Okay, so this group included internal and external stakeholders. Projects up for consideration were as followed, facilities needs assessments, which basically directs the needs and explains the improvements through facilities. Bond promises and commitments. Once the project list was created, the group was able to develop an equitable scoring and ranking system. Scoring was developed in accordance with the bond approved design standards criteria. Must be achievable with reasonable anticipated funds, promote equity across the district, incorporate the needs of a diverse student body. The priority rankings to improve teaching and learning opportunities, correct infrastructure deficiencies, improve campus safety, including student services, correct operational deficiencies, expand options for project-based learning and/or career development, and also to advance district's sustainability goals.
Hold that. Hold that for one second, please. I'm sorry. I think it's important to point this out and I've talked about this with our facilities subcommittee. I've mentioned this to the board, but this board is different from when the board was here, when the Superintendent's Bond Working Group was created. What Maurice just went over, and this is important to note because oftentimes your constituents, the public, the parents, they want to know, well, how come this school gets a project and the school doesn't get a project, right? So there's a couple of factors there. One, it's a revolving basis, right? It's based upon need, but it's also based upon when was the last time the school was modernized, right? The state of California says a school should be modernized every 30 years. But with that, the scoring that was initially done, it was based on these bullets. But then the, the point to highlight here is the priority ranking. So all of these bullets that you see here were really the important pieces as developed by the Superintendent's Bond Working Group and then supported by the board. And it wasn't that a project would check one box or two boxes, but what it was, that, what it was, was that those projects, even previous board promises of projects, they had to fall into one, if not more, of these buckets. And then based on the number of bullets that they actually checked, based on that number of boxes that they were checking, was how we were able to actually prioritize that. And that can be seen on the next slide. The next slide shows it's not intended for you to be able to read. The next slide shows it's not intended for you to be able to read. It's just really a screenshot to show you what we're working with. On the right side is just a very small snippet of what's called the Unified Implementation Plan. That sheet is actually about two pages long, but that was all of the projects as they came out of that bond working group and with the initial estimates. From there, then what we look at is we say, okay, these are the projects, but as the board knows, and we've talked about, because we had a three hundred and eighty million dollar bond, we don't issue three hundred and eighty million dollars and have that money sitting in the bank. We're very strategic about how and when we issue that money, sell the bonds in order to keep the taxpayers' rates low. So just because one score might have scored, one project may have scored slightly higher than the next, that doesn't guarantee its placement in line because that one project that scored higher could be fifty million. The next project might be twenty, and we might have been able to fit the twenty million in the smaller issuance, right? Or that first issuance, excuse me. So from there, what we did was we created this implementation plan. And then off the bottom, we started to remove projects as it did not fit into the funding. On the left, what you see there is the funding sources. We were conservative with our numbers, but what that was, was Measure G gave the bond, gave the district three hundred and eighty million dollars for facilities improvements. And then we have, we calculate in there the interest, state funding, state funding for Little Theater is specific to seismic work that has to happen. I'll get into that a little bit more. And then developer fees and then the OBF line, we can actually, we zeroed that out. That was originally a zero percent interest loan that we were going to do that was going to be paid back in lieu of a utility bill. And we were able to pick that up to relieve the general fund sum as it fit into a project scope. Next slide. So tonight, we, and I want to point out, we do have a workforce housing update towards the end, so it's not here. But the on this list, but what the project discussions are that we're going to have, we're going to talk about Longfellow Middle School, Sylvia Mendez, the BHS Little Theater, the BHS C and E project, which is capacity and expansion, district wide heat mitigation, Asia will talk a little bit about that, modernization at Washington, modernizations at Berkeley Art Magnets, Berkeley Adult School, Emerson, and then also a district wide solar project. Next slide. So Longfellow project, I've included some visuals here because it is important to point out what you see here is severe dry rot on the three story building, the curriculum building. But what looks even worse are the two photos on the bottom. And what we've seen there is actually that's on the admin building and the gym. And once we began to actually strip the skin, pull the stucco off that building, what we quickly learned was that the single story gymnasium and admin building, the condition of that structurally was exponentially worse than the three story building. So because of the size and magnitude of these repairs that have to happen, the state architect said, no, these are actually two separate projects that you have to submit. So we have to go through a whole new engineering investigation process, engineer drawings and submit. Right now, the anticipated approval from the state architect is spring of twenty five for the three story building and summer of twenty five for the gym. While this is a delay, this actually works out well just with the weather conditions when we consider the fact that the structural work has to happen and it can't happen in the rain. Next slide. There's some other factors that I did bring up to the facilities subcommittee. When we met on a Sunday back in December, we had a long workshop. And we continue to uncover new things at Longfellow that we shouldn't find, yet we do. The very top blueprint that you see on that image there is from nineteen thirty five, as I recall, and it shows a very small straight footing going into the ground. On the right of that, you see a blueprint from ninety seven, I think it was, or nineteen ninety six, which shows that there was actually an improved foundation at some point. It went deeper. It had a step footing. The foot, the photo that you see is actually what we discovered out there. We dug it up and we have a straight piece of concrete with no step footing sitting in the dirt. So this is another thing that we are dealing with. And overall, what that means to the project, besides for the time delay, is a huge cost. Longfellow, the initial budget that the board approved for this project was thirty six point five. The new ROM, which is the rough order of magnitude, we have it listed here at sixty eight million. But even based on everything that we continue to learn, what I'm going to prepare the board for is this project will likely reach seventy five million dollars when it's all said and done. Next slide. So over at Longfellow, we are continuing to do a lot of value engineering as we do on all our projects, which is just looking for missed opportunities in the in the initial budget planning of where we can save money. This seems like a really small item to talk about the rain gutters, but it's actually a tremendous item and it comes at a huge cost. What we learned on the curriculum building was that all of the water damage that we found was because of the initial design of the rain gutters. However, those rain gutters are considered to be a historic feature on the building. So we're working with the Berkeley Historic Society for them to understand that while we want to protect that as much as we can, we we're going to have to deviate from that. We came up with a plan, and that's what you see on the right originally about how would we deal with that? And we can extend some what's called TPO, some roofing and roll it through the gutter. But the problem is, is the minute that somebody's cleaning those gutters and they accidentally pierce that membrane, we're right back where we were. So we're constantly looking for ways to save money. And again, seems like a really small thing, but reinstalling those copper gutters with the intricate framing system that they had for it, we're talking about a lot of money that we can save on this project. Next slide. So this is the schedule forecast and it's done by by color coding, just to sort of show you where they're working, at what point in time. There is overlap, but they are working on everything they can. And a lot of it depends on when we come back out of the state with our approvals. For example, the three story building or the gymnasium building, there's very limited work that we can do on either of those right now because those are back sitting with the state architect. So we're doing the work in the annex building. They're doing some site work. They're doing the work on the field. But now due to the season, that's actively paused. So there's not a lot happening out there. What we anticipate right now, unless we see major changes to the plans in what we call the back checks from the state architect, is that this project will be completed in August of twenty twenty seven. Next slide. So Sylvia Mendez, this project is almost back on schedule. We did shut down for about two weeks due to some overwhelming concerns that we were hearing about. The district put some extraordinary safety measures and mitigation plans in place. We added a sixteen foot sound wall there. We added additional scaffolding, additional netting, additional air monitoring, et cetera. And what we've done is we've actually, because the schedule is so tight on this, we've agreed to pay overtime rates to actually put the contractor back on schedule. Because we did shut the project down for about two weeks when we received all the complaints, just so that not only we could conduct an investigation, but we had OSHA come in and actually do site assessments. We had the contractor's insurance carrier come in and do safety inspections. And then we brought in a third party consultant to do an independent inspection. That third party consultant continues to go out to that site every few weeks to do random inspections. And everything, the reports that are coming back are all overwhelmingly good. But all of this, it came in at about a million dollar price tag to to shut this project down and put these other mitigations in place. Next slide. Berkeley High Little Theater, this is a project that you'll see later. I'm recommending because part of this presentation is that we are recommending moving some projects around and even deferring a project. This project, I'm not recommending moving at all. And the reason for that is there's several. First of which, this is about a ninety million dollar project. So when we consider the impact of escalation to any project budget, this one's going to hurt the worst. The second is, is from a seismic standpoint, excluding what we found with the two buildings at Longfellow, from a seismic standpoint, we know that this building absolutely has to be done. It's bad enough and it's large enough in scope that it's still titled The Little Theater because that's what the project has always been. But the state architect was very clear. They said, if you touch the Little Theater, you are doing a mandatory seismic upgrade on the house as well. The thirty five hundred seat main auditorium. So this project does a lot of things. It modernizes and seismically retrofits the entire theater building, both the Little Theater and the house. It modernizes and refreshes that. Most of it hasn't been touched since the forties, since its original construction. And we're also capturing on an opportunity here that it added a very small amount in the grand scheme of this budget. But one of the biggest problems that we continue to have at Berkeley High is really not enough restrooms. And the restrooms that we're talking about are for teachers and students, and they're all gender neutral. So because of the elevation changes there, we're adding another building, which will basically sit underneath the lobby essentially, which will offer seven more restrooms, seven more stalls for students, as well as seven individual stalls for staff, all of which will be gender neutral. Next slide. So Berkeley High School Capacity and Expansion Factors. Current classroom needs at Berkeley High, in speaking with Principal DeGosa and looking at their master's schedule, they roughly need about thirty more classrooms at that site. There's no way to give them that. But one of the things that we noticed when we were planning the original build out of G one oh seven, one oh nine, was to build that out truly as CTE space, as the board had initially approved, was going to cost about a million five more than what it should have, just because of where it was in the G building, and it's a historic building. And all that did was solve for the need for CTE, but it didn't solve for these other needs. So we came up with this plan, which gave the CTE program a dedicated shop and and lab of about five thousand square feet for robotics, advanced machining. It also adds nine additional general ed classrooms between the five in that building, and then converting G one oh seven, one oh nine back to four classrooms. It adds additional office space, what's needed at the at the campus and allows us to house an administrator on that end of the campus as well. Currently, they're all housed in one corner of the campus. It adds restrooms and conference areas. It also creates the opportunity to bring the tennis courts back, which has been definitely a huge source of contention and discussion for over a decade now. And this project does create a challenge though, right? Berkeley High is built out and where this is going to go is the softball field. So this plan resolves a lot of issues and the way that we really fully envelope that, fully resolve everything is to embark on some work at Mollering Field as well. That's in the next slide here. Oh, sorry. Two more slides ahead. So the original schedule for the C and E, the C and E project, Capacity and Expansion Project was to begin in June of twenty six. We've actually moved that back one year to start in June of twenty seven. And we've done that for a few reasons, one of which is we still have a lot of planning and community engagement work to do around Mollering Field, as you'll see in the next slide. But also, once we started putting it together and we came to understand the full breadth of what we have to do at Mollering Field to really honor some of the the wants, if you will, of the community, it is costing a lot more. So the original budget for this, and this is part of what we're asking you to vote on, is budget changes and timeline changes. The original budget for this project was twenty four point eight million. We're estimating this project to have a budget of forty four point seven million dollars. Keeping in mind, this does cover a lot of things from classroom space to fields to tennis courts, et cetera. So if we jump to the next slide, what we'll see is the newest design, and I can't take credit for this. There's a lot of community members who have been involved, as well as our union partners and past union partners who have actually retired. But they came up with the idea of the, one of the sources of contention around this is right now a large space of Tim Mollering Field is used as open green space for the community. In order to put the softball field there originally with the size, the footprint of that field space, we would have to completely take away that that open green space. And while you can absolutely make the argument, well, it's district property, it's there for district use, the community has become accustomed to it and they want to keep some green space, which we understand. We also know that there's a need for restrooms at this site. It was, there were never any put in when the original site was built, as well as some changing rooms, batting cages, things like that. What this design does is this actually allows for the baseball field as well as a softball field. And what you see on the top screen is maintaining some open green space. So what's the big difference? The big difference is if you look on the bottom, Derby Street is smaller and it's a one way street. This is going to involve a lot of partnership with you, the board, working with our partners on city council. We've already had a conversation with FIRE because FIRE really, this is a major artery for the fire department. So we viewed it as FIRE could potentially be one of the biggest challenges. I I met with several of the FIRE chiefs about two months ago, and they actually signed off on this and blessed this. As long as we can continue to maintain twenty foot clearance, they're absolutely in support of this project as it benefits the community as a whole. Next slide. This is Asia. You're good.
Thank you, John. Good evening. My name is Asia Evans and I am the District Safety Risk, Safety and Risk Coordinator. And I was also involved in the heat mitigation project. This project was constructed for safety purposes, not only for comfort, but also in alignment with Cal OSHA regulations regarding heat mitigation. Our maintenance department has piloted the efficiency of BAF high velocity fans in various classrooms throughout the district with excellent results. So the design is currently in progress to add additional BAF to all classroom and ancillary spaces to in the district. Now, due to the increase of cost projects in progress, there are going to be two phases of heat mitigation. The first phase will be the installation of the fans beginning in summer twenty twenty five to spring twenty twenty six, then following in summer twenty twenty six to spring twenty twenty seven, in which we'll install the Mecco shades, the same shades that you see here in this room.
Yes, I'm going to speak briefly about a couple more projects. So Washington Modernization Project was identified by the the Bond Working Group as a priority primarily due to the safety issues with the school office being inside of the, basically in the middle of the main building. So this design will actually bring that office space to a primary entry point for the campus and will also help control the flow of traffic through the school. We're also going to be addressing some of the water infiltration issues we have there. As we've witnessed at Longfellow, the last thing we want is more water infiltration issues in our schools. So it's one of our biggest priorities to get that taken care of here at Washington as well. We've also got some infrastructure that's going to be addressed as long and as well as the nutrition services. This school has very inadequate nutrition services for the students, so we're going to be addressing that as well. Our initial plan was to start work on that this summer, summer of twenty five. But with the initial feedback that we've gotten from DSA, the Division State Architect, we anticipate not getting that approval in time for us to proceed, starting in June of twenty five. So we are anticipating pushing that until the start of June of twenty six, and that will continue through twenty eight. The next project is the Berkeley Arts Magnet. Again, identified as a priority from the working group, primarily due to failing infrastructure. Mechanical systems, electrical systems are all in a major need of updating. We originally anticipated starting construction for that in twenty five, as summer twenty five as well. We are just about through DSA, so we do anticipate having DSA approval shortly. But because of the timing of funding, we anticipate, we're actually recommending that we defer this particular project till twenty twenty nine.
If I may, I just want to interject because I see the way that I wrote it on the slide and it's a little bit disingenuous, not with intention. But we talk about, we recommend pushing this project back to twenty twenty nine because of timing of funding, but that's only half of it. The other is really like we're seeing potentially a forty to forty five million dollar cost increase at Longfellow, and that's a project that's already underway. So we have to continue with that project. And what what I mean by I say about how the funding comes in is we don't want to just start selling too much in bonds because then what we're going to have is we're going to push the tax rate up through the roof. So, go ahead.
Next slide, please. The next project I would like to speak about is the Berkeley Adult School. As we know, Longfellow is now as we know Longfellow is now using this campus for their their facilities this is a priority for for us though we really can't start that until Longfellow has moved back to their original campus the original plan was start in summer twenty five we are in DSA now we anticipate approval for that shortly but we are recommending that we push that out until Longfellow is back with the potential of even deferring that one until twenty twenty nine as well also because of some of the funding issues or not the funding issues but the the cash that we're spending on on Longfellow campus Emerson modernization this one was identified primarily for capacity needs for that particular campus we are in design we don't anticipate having designs done early enough to start which was we're originally anticipating twenty twenty five construction right now we're not anticipating designs being complete and ready until twenty twenty six and we are considering and particularly recommending that we defer this to potentially a later bond program if necessary all depends on how much we have coming back from the state for the other projects that will free up funding for this one if if that's possible
yeah and I got to have some conversations with Principal Holmes just recently when I got back in town about this and we did talk about this and I explained to her why with Emerson my recommendation would actually be to move it to a later bond measure because while we can absolutely change how we issue money and defer projects how we issue money we can't add to what that total is so you know we're spending a lot more money on Longfellow we're spending more money on Mendez and we're spending more money on the theater because the state said no you gotta do the whole project right you gotta do the the main theater as well so when we look at that and we compare that against for example BAM or excuse me the adult school the needs at both BAM and the adult school are exponentially worse than Emerson it's not to not it's not to say that Emerson doesn't need a modernization it absolutely does need to be modernized but at BAM and Berkeley Adult School for example almost every single window leaks we have major building envelope issues along with infrastructure issues and ADA and path of travel etc so for that reason we make the recommendation that this one gets pushed next slide please so district-wide solar this is it's a little it's a little confusing the way that it's worded but what this was was really to finish off the district solar plan and so Longfellow Sylvia Mendez Berkeley Arts Magnet and the BHS nadatorium all have a major amount of solar incorporated into that project the nadatorium project it was prior to you joining Director Corn but the nadatorium is the indoor pool at the high school but that building alone was actually the largest consumer of electricity in the entire district so what we did was that entire side of the campus all along Milvia Street every rooftop is covered covered in solar we added three hundred and seventy six kilowatts of solar just to offset the energy from that one building there are major projects for solar at these other ones and BAM what we saw in design was we have the room on the campus and we also have the infrastructure the way it's being laid out on the campus that we can add enough solar there to actually make BAM the first net zero campus we will be one hundred percent off grid over there but what does that leave for district-wide that left the district office parking lot this great big parking lot out here that we say wow how much solar could we put up and the transportation parking lot and what we quickly saw in a study was because of the change to the PG and E rules under the Public Utilities Commission they switched us from what they called net NEM which is net energy metering NEM two oh to net NEM three oh we got our applications in on time to actually be grandfathered in on NEM two oh but there was no way that we could possibly get through design approval and construction in time to capture that so what that means is instead of seeing a one point four million dollar savings we would have seen about a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar savings quite frankly there are much better ways and much more cost-effective ways for the district to reach its sustainability goals that project just from a financial perspective it it's a losing proposition next slide so summary of recommendations before I hand it over to Ashley Longfellow it's an ongoing project we're going to continue we recommend that the board support that right Sylvia Mendez ongoing project she shorted me fifteen minutes just for the record Sylvia Mendez is ongoing BHS Little Theater for the reasons that I discussed we recommend keeping that on schedule and not doing anything with that the C and E project out at the high school we recommend that we start construction in twenty seven the heat mitigation we look to break up into two separate phases as Asia explained and that's primarily just because of cash flow Washington modernization we recommend we're moving that to summer of twenty twenty six and that's not anything other than it's just taking longer to get the state approvals than originally anticipated Berkeley Arts Magnet and Berkeley Adult School we recommend that the board says yes move them out to twenty twenty nine depending upon SAB funds and what that is a state allocation board if we see money come in from the state sooner on the facilities plan where we qualify for it then we can absolutely push those projects up because we will have fully designed and approved plans at that point in time Emerson we recommend moving to potentially an ex bond measure and canceling the district-wide solar project with that I'm going to pass it over to Ashley
the next slide please so as Assistant Superintendent Kalis has reiterated this slide kind of shows where we're increasing and decreasing projects throughout the bond program there's a few projects that we didn't touch too much detail on but these are all projects that are either in progress have been completed or we're proposing for cancelling the increases are our biggest numbers right here for C and E as we reviewed we're needing an increase of about twenty five million dollars at this time to note on that we are still in the concept phase for Mullering Field so these again are our rough projected numbers for that the King CDC project was initially a project that was to modernize that entire school site which was mostly accomplished over this summer with the sprint of shifting and re-adjusting where students were being housed for this incoming school year due to having to accommodate the adult school being at this campus we've had some additional cost increases for temporary restrooms and a lot of the civil work that came with that so in order to accommodate where our costs are at now we're looking at a one point five million dollar increase of that budget Longfellow as we've reviewed many times we're looking potentially right now at a thirty one point four million dollar budget increase and Washington Washington modernization as we've been doing engineer estimates with our team we're looking at a four million dollar increase for that project as well to accommodate all these needs the decreases and closeouts that you're seeing we are constantly in efforts to reduce budgets where necessary by doing value engineering and a lot of this on the list is also project closeout projects that have been completed so we're doing that checks and balances to see tying up every dollar every cent that we can the biggest goal is to maximize every dollar that we can for this bond and a big piece of where a lot of these numbers will fluctuate is obviously as we're hitting construction as things are occurring but the also as Assistant Superintendent Kalis talked on is the state allocated bonds a lot of that will will play into effect of how much money we're needing out of the bond specifically and what could be covered out of state bond uh state the actual state bond sorry next slide
hold one second I just I I look up and I see a couple of wheels spinning right wondering wow we're talking about a lot of money and increases right and I definitely see that at least it seems like you guys are thinking about that so I do want to point this out when 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 we created the bond list what we did on that Unified Implementation Plan was for all of the out years and you'll see that on the slide Ashley is going to show about cash flow and things like that the normal escalator for for increase in costs that's run at that time was about three percent per year I had the architect run all of those numbers at six percent increases every year and the architect told me John you're crazy it's never going to go up that much well we ran it at six percent per year and what we've seen is overall it didn't make a dent in it so we've known this is coming for some time but to try to put a raw a new ROM to original budgets we would have had to have completely redone that implementation plan which is why we handle it in this manner where we first talk with it with our subcommittee and then bring it to the board as just a major shift so just so you understand our estimates aren't that far off it's just the net estimates that were done in twenty nineteen even with that high escalator it didn't make a dent in it with what we've seen with inflation costs with issues with just getting labor on the jobs and things like that so Ashley
go ahead next slide thank you ladies so we're in constant effort we're consistently daily weekly reviewing our cash flow anticipating how we expect to spend our dollars over the next we're looking all the way to twenty thirty at this point so these numbers are constantly reviewed as a team again we're doing a lot of value engineering to see where we can cut back and save on money the biggest thing is just ensuring that we're responsible for our financial management and so our our cash flow again it's small here because it's a very long it's a large lengthy document but it's in constant update of what we spent to date what we anticipate spending as we're getting DSA approved drawings we're taking in those engineering estimates and reevaluating our budgets and and again tying every dollar back as well that we can as we're completing projects as we're tying them up as we're able to find where we can make some cost savings those are also reflected in these increases and decreases so one of the items that we've given you guys for board approval is that updated what you guys see as the green and yellow sheet which is our budget allocation for projects there's a lot on this one as again we just did our checks and balances to close out and complete a lot of old projects and grab every single diamond penny that we can to reallocate to all the current projects and upcoming projects
and the cash flow here is not really intended to be read right I'll happily share it with you Mike I might quiz you later or Director Chang on it but really what it's to show is so we color code different iterations of a project whether it be in there's three different iterations of design then there's bidding then there's construction etc that's the different colors that you see but what happens is is at the bottom of the sheet so when we're taking it through construction what we have to do is we have to estimate roughly per interim how much money do we believe that contractor is actually going to bill for and then from that we're totaling it out at the bottom based on what's in the bank so to speak so that we know how to work with Pauline and her team to work with our financial advisors as to when we do the next bond issuance this allows us to project those bond issuances but it also allows us to constantly work with like our 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 financial advisor KNN to be watching the market watching market rates things like that to know like hey do we need to speed up an issuance do we need to slow down a project what do we need to do because at the end of it all in twenty eighteen twenty nineteen when the board said yes go back out for another bond what the board had reaffirmed there was it its commitment to the community which was that all GO bonds combined would never exceed a tax rate of a hundred and seventy one dollars and sixty cents per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value we're nowhere near that we never want to max out that credit card but we want to honor that promise and that commitment and keep it low so that's why it's sort of a this it's a long answer or a long explanation but it's important to understand Ashley
I would say just to touch on that more is that you know we look ahead to to ensure that our projects are planned around that cash flow deposit and that's what's so big about the timing adjustments that we're needing that we're proposing to the board is a lot of that is due to reviewing what the tax rates are going to be at and when we can expect cash flow to come in and that's a big key factor for it
okay so three slides left and there's going to be a quiz so this is what's that okay this is an informational update so this is about workforce housing and it's about Longfellow so workforce housing there's a couple of strike throughs there and I heard mention of it and public comment earlier about well the date changed and we're not being told I found out two hours before walking into a staff meeting today at Longfellow with superintendent right that the date got pushed the gate that the groundbreaking got pushed by a full month now we've been asking can we delay the project can we delay the project and we keep hearing the same thing no you cannot delay the project if you delay it you will lose forty nine point four million dollars in funding for an eighty eight million dollar bill the reason that it's delayed is there is two California state agencies that are paying significant monies into that one of them is running severely behind so I actually spoke with them and I said well look can you just run a little bit further behind right let us start in June nope they're not willing to do that they're going to process it as quickly as they can but the other agency it's Cal HFA which is up behind they said the other agency it does not impact our funding because it's one state agency to another so what you see here is sort of an anticipated activity schedule right now a groundbreaking being on April twelfth and really that work starting in April but we'll see when that approval comes in and the funding comes in from Cal HFA on the right-hand side there's a note because this is important to mention there's actually a dedicated construction page of the project's website so this project has always had its own website and the city actually requires us to put certain things on that and that includes just as a small sampling conditions of approval transportation construction plan construction noise reduction program etc all of that is under the city and it's required to be posted there they even have to post their super or their their construction foreman's phone number on there right so you can call them if you're unhappy I'm pointing this out because it's it's significantly different even than a BUSD construction project and a lot of a lot of what my hope is here tonight is to make everybody understand this is not a BUSD project this is a project that BUSD myself my team the governing board has been working on for over six years prior to that there was a huge community contingent that was working on this this was something that was really viewed as important to not only the BUSD community but to the community at whole and evidence of that shows in what the turnout and support was for measure oh the city's measure oh low income or excuse me low income housing bond right that's actually a large contributor of about twenty four million dollars to this project so but understanding that all the district has done is entered into a land lease and figured out a way to structure this where we can do this without costing our taxpayers money as a school bond so by doing that we're we're separating the land and we really we can jump to the next slide please we want people to understand it's no longer one site what you see there that red line that delineating line in the parking lot that's actually a new property line and it would be very easy to say oh well you're saying it's not the same site but it's still in the parking lot yeah it is but it's really a neighbor to our school at this point in time what that red line shows is actually a twenty foot sound wall that's being put up there's some concerns around how do you keep the kids safe and off of the construction site well it's fenced on three sides with sixteen foot fences currently and there'll be a twenty foot sound wall in between so the construction activities will not actually bleed over physically into the site nor will the site be able to come over into the construction site we're coordinating deliveries already talking with the contractor with the developer on what they're what their construction deliveries look like because we can't impede upon drop off and pickup for that school one of the thing that's shown here is you'll actually see on that picture there's a crane and there's a radius circle that runs around that that shows what's called a pick plan and we're showing that just so that people understand that we are thinking about safety we had the developer already worked with Caltrans to pull the necessary permits to actually load and unload this site with that crane from San Pablo Avenue as opposed to Virginia Street how to be Caltrans because it's a state road why are we going to mess up San Pablo because I'm not willing to have that crane pick all those materials over the school and if we load off Virginia we have to go over the school now it's important to note that when the crane is not in use the crane is not locked the crane moves with the wind right it's designed to do that as a sky crane so it won't topple so the crane will turn over the building which is absolutely acceptable by OSHA standards by California standards and by school construction standards because it's often we have cranes on school sites when doing modernizations or new builds next slide this part of the informational update pertains to Longfellow operating at that site in October we started talking with the city of Berkeley about needing a new drop-off zone and a new bus zone met several representatives from the city out there they looked at it what they've offered but we're still waiting final approval from the city is a two hundred foot passenger loading zone for rolling drop off and pickup that'll be on Virginia Street with right around the corner will be a hundred feet which is according to our Transportation Department what she needs for two buses for the school buses we're putting the school buses up on the Curtis Street side just because that's flat it doesn't have the It doesn't have the, the grade changes that we see on Virginia, so it's easier to meet ADA. Around both sides of that garden, there is an entrance to the back door of the school. What we're doing over this summer, along with some other work there, is we're actually installing some new fencing around the garden, just on the school side, with some new gates. And by doing that, that allows us to create a secure entry and keep it as a closed campus. We already have card readers. We're adding an intercom at the back door and card readers on the gates. So that allows it to be a locked campus, but for staff to still come in. At this point, I do want to take a couple of opportunities to talk about, because I tried to limit the size of this in, to some degree. But there's been questions from the board that you guys have asked me individually, and I've tried to answer. I've also heard some tonight. So I do want to talk about a few things with that. One of which is, is that, sorry, I lost my train of thought there for a minute. One of the things is that the workforce housing project has been a little bit less than transparent. I want to point out, we've been working on this at the board level, right? Here in this boardroom and in literally dozens of meetings with the community for over six years now. We've talked about it at city council meetings. We've held neighborhood meetings. We've had it on the website everywhere else. So it's definitely been out there. There's concerns about Longfellow being at the site while it is under construction. I understand that. School construction is common. It's how we do it. It's not as simple as moving them to another site. There was a request to do that with Sylvia Mendez, if you may recall. It delayed that project by a year. We searched high and low, and then we went back and we did it two and three more times. We looked at every option that we could, including talking to all of our neighboring districts, saying, do you have an empty school? We'll rent it. We'll pay for transportation. We'll move the kids. Nobody had it. We fielded ideas. We listened to what everybody said, right? And we looked at them, but I can't use sites that are not approved by the Division of State Architect to house our students. It's, it's against the law. We cannot do it. So we have looked at all of those things. Understanding that, this afternoon, myself and superintendent, we had an opportunity to actually attend the staff meeting over at Longfellow. It was really to listen and understand what the concerns of the teachers are, but also for them to have an option, or a, a, a moment to talk to us directly about the concerns of the students. The majority of these concerns, we're trying to meet the best way that we can. There was, I heard a comment tonight, I think, about the basketball hoops. The basketball hoops are all broken. But what I'll say is that we moved seven facilities in two months. That's not a small thing. So with that, did we think about they need basketball and somewhere to play? We absolutely did. But the only thing that we can do in that time was give them some temporary measures, right? We gave them basketball hoops. Unfortunately, they were all broken in the first seven weeks. I've been working with Director Borden, as well as Steve Collins, our maintenance manager. They have every intention of actually putting in the permanent systems over the summer. And they're working to see if there's a way that they can do that over break. So these are things that we are doing. Unfortunately, people just don't see it yet. But we are communicating that constantly with the school site. And beyond that, what I'll say is, we're continuing to lean on the state agencies to try to push the groundbreaking. But we have very limited options to what we can do. I've heard recommendations and suggestions from the public of just push it or just cancel it or things like that. Even if the board were to make the decision today to say workforce housing is no longer important, and I'm not saying that's what you would say. But if you made that decision and you pulled us from the project, okay, that will save the parking lot at San Pablo. But understand it will also open up the board to millions of dollars of litigation, because the developer has spent millions of dollars on this project so far, moving it through design and development. So it's something to consider. Next slide. With that, we will open for questions.
I do have one comment that you guys will see for the February 19th meeting that we caught today that was missed on the updated green and yellow sheet that you guys have for approval. There is one item missing from that, so we will, we will be presenting a correction notice to that on the February 19th. And that is the mitigation methods for the San Pablo campus modifications that are going to be required in order to accommodate the workforce housing going in. And as everything that Assistant Superintendent Kalis mentioned with the fencing with the sound wall. So, that is allocated and accounted for in our cash flow. We just missed it on the green and yellow update for you guys for your review. So you will see that correction notice for the next meeting. And that's all I have.
All right. So Director Chang, slide four, third bullet, no.
It's 2.3. Do you folks, President Brown, do you have questions that you want to start off with? Okay. Thank you. I just want to check. Are, do board members have questions?
I have a couple of questions. Do you want to start, Director? Thank you for that presentation. It was very thorough. And it's nice to see the full team. We, it's usually just John. So thank you all for coming and for staying. So like, we really appreciate it and welcome to the district. I just have a couple of questions about, well, one, the tennis courts. I know the tennis team was here at the last board meeting, that they came out, have lots of students, lots of parents that have been advocating. I think they gave me like 24 years, crazy amount of time, definitely predates me in Berkeley and in the district, like for, for the courts. But one of the things they mentioned is that with the current site where they have the courts, that there's going to be a change next year, I believe, that that site will not be accessible to the team. And so I think pushing that project to 2027, I just have concerns, like have we come up with an interim solution for, for the BHS tennis team in particular? Because I think they, when they came to the board, and correct me, Superintendent, if I'm wrong, but I think they said that it was next year that they would, they would lose access to the, the current place, with the, the current courts where they're practicing. So that's one question. And then, I appreciate, Director Assistant Superintendent Kalis, when you started with the criteria of like how these projects are chosen and prioritized. And understand that always the demand is more than what we have money for, right? But the, my concern is, you know, we're approving a lot of big capital projects. And there's some sites that haven't received, I know that there's a lot of Longfellow parents that are expressing concerns about the construction and I don't minimize those at all. But we have King, that's a very, you know, from a facilities perspective, a, a very nice site. We have Longfellow that will be, right, a, a new site in a couple of years. And then there's schools like Willard that haven't had a large-scale facilities upgrade in a long time. And so, just wanted to know, like, how do we make sure that when we're doing these projects, right, that we're also, if we, as we have our assignment system, right, and we promise parents kind of the same menu at every school, or very similar menus, through, through the way that we assign our students? It doesn't feel right that there's like a, one of the middle schools, it's, it's not receiving as much attention as the other two. And so, that's a, a big concern for me. And I, and I'm sure that's also, if we dig into the elementary schools, we could look at John Muir and other schools, where perhaps that, that might feel the same for some parents. And so, how do you address that when there's some schools that are missing from this list? And also the issue with the tennis courts?
So let me start at Willard. I'm going to work it backwards. So, to that point, so one, when the superintendents' bond working group created the project list, and it was prior to any of you being on the board, and we talked about this a little bit today in the staff meeting at Longfellow, Longfellow was not identified for a modernization. While it was absolutely needed, and thank goodness we're doing it with what we're finding, right? It did not score high enough on the criteria ranking based upon the overall facilities needs assessment that was done by our architects and engineers. At the time, in $2018, our overall needs assessment was 1.3 billion in the district, okay? So, Longfellow actually wasn't on the list. There was some parent advocates who really did a great job of speaking to the board and coming out and talking about the need. And from that point, the board authorized the project, and that project grew in scope exponentially, right? Because once the board said, please start digging into this, looking at it, that's where it jumped up to a $30 million mod. So you're right that right now, we've done work at King recently, right? We're doing all this work at Longfellow. What about Willard? So I did pull the records. I did look at it. Willard did receive a modernization in 2016, but it was on the smaller side. It was, I, I don't recall the dollars, but it did include a lot of work for ADA path of travel, which that is, so you understand when we go to the state architect, they look at three things. They look at the entire plans, but they're concerned with the three things. They're concerned with ADA, they're concerned with fire, life, safety, and structural, in that order. Now, ADA typically upgrades every single year. It changes the slope of the concrete that you can have, the turnaround radiuses, et cetera. If I can't prove an ADA path of travel for everywhere, the rest of it doesn't matter. So, that's why I tell people, when we talk at these, even in conception meetings about projects, I explain to the public, first, we're going to do the things we have to do. Then we can determine how much money is left to do the things we want to do. So Willard, actually, a lot of those dollars were chewed up by ADA dollars. Following that, there was several roofs that were replaced at Willard. And at the same time, they had to do a lot of water infiltration issues down below, on getting an undergrade. But then there was a lot of mold and, and, excuse me, there was a lot of mold abatement that had to happen at Willard at the same time. Now, they also did some upgrades to the electrical and the ventilation. They did a PA system. They did a couple of restroom upgrades. But you're right, it hasn't received a major modernization. And that's where it's so important to understand that this is why, in order to have quality facilities, when we think about, we went out for a $380 million bond in 2020. And the voters of Berkeley really generously supported that bond, and it's so much money. But in $2018, our needs were 1.3 billion. Historically, every 10 years or so, we've been going out for new bonds. And what we have to continue to do is do that if we're going to continue to modernize and maintain all of our schools. Willard, great example, is Willard has a really small metal shop theater, right? That, as I understand it, because it predates me, was mostly put together by parents and DSA don't know, and I don't want to know, right? But, like, there is a need for performing arts space on that campus. There's a need for a lot of different things on that campus. But right now, truthfully, where do we take that from, right? So we can't take it out of Longfellow or Sylvia Mendez. Those projects are ongoing. When we consider the seismic risk of every building in this district, that theater is by far the greatest risk that we have. If you read the seismic report, you'd get goosebumps up, because I do, right? It's, it's, it's in bad shape. The built, the building, they started construction in the 40s. It was known in the, as the birdcage for a long time, because it was just a steel frame, because construction stopped for the war, or I think it started in '39. Then they resumed construction after the war. So, but the building hasn't been touched ever since, right? With the exception of being that we just did the classroom wing. So, you need to do that. So it's sort of like, what other projects do you pick apart? Then there's projects that do come up that the board says, hey, this is really important. We need to do this. And a perfect example of this is, when I came in the district over six years ago, I really wanted to see us have closed campuses. When we did Oxford here at West Campus, I pushed that design as a closed campus, and I'll admit it to you all now. I didn't ask the board. I just sort of pushed it through and I said, I'm sorry, later, right? But at the time, there was this, this belief in Berkeley that our campuses should be open. I went to one school my first week here, and I, I won't talk about what school it was, but the doors that go out to the street from the classrooms were wide open. And I asked the principal at the time, I said, why are these open? And they said, oh, this is Berkeley. We like for the community to stop in and say hi and see what we're teaching. I couldn't believe it. And after the unfortunate events in Valdi, the community responded, the board responded, said, John, you need to do this. You need to do access control everywhere, upgrade all the cameras, upgrade all the servers, et cetera. It was a $13 million project. So, understanding that there's other projects like that that might become a priority to the board, right? There's already not room to add new modernization projects like Willard and the current bond. But that's part of why we're even talking about like BAM and the adult school saying, at least right now, and if you looked on the slide, it said, yeah, we're talking about moving them to 2029 because of state allocation board money, because of when we issue money, because of cash flow, et cetera. But also, it said on there possibly deferring. And it said possibly deferring, because if the board comes and says, hey, we want you to do this too, great. But my question back to the board, first with the subcommittee and then the board, is going to be, where would you like me to take the money from? So, one of those projects absolutely has to suffer. I've heard Anikya say this many times. She says she coined the term. I heard Assistant Superintendent Follinsby say it many more times. But the board can do anything it wants, but you can't do everything you want, right? I, I'm going to pay for this one. I can tell from the superintendent. But it's, it's the reality. So, understanding that, when you, when, when we want to do Willard, and we absolutely do, and we want to work at other elementary schools, or we want to do, we want to do things, more things at BTEC, right? The other thing to remember is we've done some small projects at Willard.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And we, I have to interrupt for one second for a very important priority. We need to have a motion to extend the meeting beyond 11, just so we have that on record. And also on record, the president, President Brown is not present. She's not feeling great. So she's taken, she, I think she might have logged off about.
She excused herself.
Okay, I don't know. We need to have a time. Great.
A motion to extend to 11:20 with the hope that we're going to end a lot earlier?
I'll second.
Do we need to take a, a roll call?
Director Vasilev?
Yes.
Director Corn?
Yes.
Vice President Chang?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Great. So, AS.
Lastly, on Willard, we are responding though, where we can on smaller projects to really help improve the overall school climate and things like that. The Growing Leaders Program at Willard is an amazing program, right? And the conditions in which they were working several years ago, it was a home economics classroom that had, in the 70s, should have been demolished. If you dropped something as heavy as the phone on the counter, it would actually fall through the counter. It's this beautiful space now.
The building said.
I need them to vote.
Yeah. Yeah, the facility said.
Actually, that's a technology thing.
Yeah, the building said we're done.
Automated through technology. Yeah. Might want me to answer that question before they go back on, though.
Here we go.
Screen's back.
This has happened before. We should get the programming changed. If you change it to midnight.
These ones are PR.
See the flashing? They're still coming online. They're online. You're back.
Oh.
Mine went on.
I think it just went on.
Can I, can I build on it? Director Vasilev's question to just say, I know many districts have a facilities master plan to help make these long-term decisions. Is that in the works?
We have, and we're actually getting ready to do a new one, because with the new state bond that passed, and they still, the state has already said like, hey, if you want to continue to qualify for state monies, which we obviously do, you need to do a new master plan, and you need to make a commitment to update that master plan at least once every five years. And we actually met with a demographer about it today, because there's a demographics component to it. But they also said, we know that we want you to do this, but we don't know the rules yet. So, we're sort of, we're putting everything in place to bring on the architect and a demographer and things like that to put together a new master plan. But we're not ready to pull the trigger on that yet, because we don't quite know what the rules are.
Just to piggyback on Director Corn's question. Just to piggyback on Director Korn's question, what's the like general, like broad strokes timeline? Like, is this something that could come to the board before the end of this year? Would it be next year? Just like if we had to put together a master plan to answer some of these broader questions, right? And have a, like a timeline for potential bond renewal?
Sure. So I think, uh, what are we in February? It will be this calendar year that we will be bringing contract to the board to redo our master plan. I don't know when yet, right? And a lot of that is going to depend upon how soon, how soon the state uh, issues the new rules around it. And then as far as a bond renewal, historically, Berkeley has done general obligation bonds every 10 years. Right now, based on everything that we've seen for cost overruns due to unforeseen's like Longfellow, as well as increasing costs and inflation and everything else. My recommendation, if you have to ask me today what I would say, I would say we should really start thinking about a bond measure in 2028. Because by that point, we will be at least fully issued and spending down. We did an issuance in June of 2024. We're doing another issuance in May of 2025, that's coming to the board here shortly. And likely another issuance in May of 2026. And one of the things that I have the financial advisor working on right now is to say, okay, we, we're very careful at how we issue money, one for the tax rate. But also there's what's called arbitrage rules. So we have to expense down 85% in 36 months or there's tax implications. But knowing how fast we're going to spend it down, what I've asked them to do is actually run the numbers to say, instead of doing a 25 issuance and a 26 issuance, what would it look right like for the tax rate to do one issuance in 25 of all of that money? Because each time we issue money, there's cost of issuance as well. And that, that's a burden to the taxpayer. So wherever we can actually lower that burden and lower their debt, that's our goal. But to answer your question, probably 2028.
And the, the tennis court question, did you answer that?
Oh, no, I didn't, I'm sorry. So no, I don't have an answer for you yet, I really don't. We've lost, uh, you know, I believe, I, I believe they were partnering with Cal for tennis courts, if I'm not mistaken. But we try to work with the city, we absolutely try to work with our partners at Cal. The high school tries to work with King on their tennis courts, but it's King's tennis courts, so they have the priority, et cetera. The one year that we're recommending on the push on that, it's, it's, it's an impact to the tennis team and I totally understand that and I'll do whatever I can to support that. But I can't give them a facility I don't have, nor can I build a new facility without having money in the bank to pay for it.
I totally understand. I, I guess my direction would be that be, um, uh, we're taking action today to accept your recommendations.
Yes.
It's hard for me to take that action without knowing what's the plan, the contingency plan for that team because they've been coming year after year to this board. And I feel like we owe it to them to give them like a, a picture of where they're going to be next year. I mean, yeah.
My job is never to give you work. But what I would urge and really ask of the board is this is where we need board partnership back, and I'm sorry to do this, right? But even to work with our partners at the city, right? We have tennis courts at Grove Park, we have tennis courts at San Pablo. We have tennis courts in the city that it is hard for BUSD to use. So this is where we absolutely need full partnership and trying to get our partners back to the table to actually give us a priority for these. And I, I'm sorry to do that, but I'm, I'm just being very honest. There's only so much pressure that I can apply to those city partners.
And Superintendent, can this please be agendized for the two by two as well? Like with urgency, the tennis courts, it's going to be a long two by two meeting.
I have so many questions, but I won't ask them all now. Um, I do want to ask one question now, which is, um, I heard you talk about at Sylvia Mendez, um, OSHA inspections, insurance inspections, third-party inspections to help reassure the community about the safety of the construction project there. Can those same measures be taken at Long, at Longfellow, at the Berkeley Adult School of Surrounding the Workforce Housing to address people's safety concerns?
They can be, but we can't require it. And what I mean by that is, as I've talked about, this is a totally different type of project. All that we have is a land lease. How the developer builds it, they have to operate within the confines and the code and the best practices of OSHA. And they have to operate within the city ordinance of Berkeley and all the, the, the local state and federal laws around construction. But what we can't do is tell them, you need to bring your insurance company out once a month, you need to do this. Now, one of the things that we are doing to at least, at the very least, ensure that they're staying within the four corners of where they're supposed to be is our CM and PM firm Van Pelt. We do have a project manager assigned to that project to really work with their safety people, to work with their project managers. They're not there constantly looking at everything, but they are overseeing that project to make sure that we're doing it. And then as the owner, right, as the, the landowner, we have a right to look at that as well. But we can't require them to sign up for voluntary OSHA inspections or to bring their insurance company out.
Can we require them or encourage them or facilitate them doing community engagement with the neighbors and the school community around the construction project?
And they have, I mean, and that's when I spoke earlier about, you know, over two dozen meetings. That was actually all led by our developing team and we were part of that. But we met with the school community and, and this goes back a long time. So a lot of the folks who you hear come and talk to the meetings, they're like, well, we didn't know. Well, they didn't because they weren't there, right? And I understand that, but this is six years in the making just at the district level and many years prior to that in the community. So, um, but that development team also led neighbors, or excuse me, led meetings with all of the surrounding neighbors. We had two subcommittees off of the development team and it included neighborhood, right? And one of those actually, excuse me, one of them included neighborhood participants, which was the design subcommittee, right? The neighbors actually had a say in what that design was going to look like in the end.
Oh, that's great to hear. And, and I think it's a point well taken that there's a whole school community there now suddenly that wasn't there before and didn't get to benefit from that engagement. And so it's worth kind of thinking about how to communicate again more frequently with them.
Yeah, there's the website that we presented earlier in the slides too, that families and community members are more than welcome to visit and get more information.
Thank you so much. I want to make a couple of quick questions and remarks. Thanks for the very detailed and comprehensive overview of a very broad scope and uh, involved modernization across the district. You know, I think that the Berkeley High Capacity Expansion is a very exciting um, uh, program. And something emerged uh, due to some flexibility uh, through board members and um, uh, AS Kalis and his team. And I really uh, very much looking forward to that space, the getting off the ground. And it, um, it envisions um, the type of flexibility that I think our district needs. Given the short amount of little amount of space that we do have. One fast question here, um, with regard to this CNE space that you're referencing. You, you did refer to restrooms and I, I know that in facilities meetings and in CBOC committee conversations, there's been more specificity there. Is there a plan for how many restrooms?
There is, but I think I forgot at 10 o'clock.
Okay.
There, there is, but I, off the top of my head, I don't recall. I know it's seven and seven, seven students, seven staff in the new restroom building that's going on the Little Theater.
Yeah.
But I don't remember what the counts are out at the CNE building on the other end of the campus.
And I'm trying to recollect, would they um, be a mix between those for students as well as for staff?
Yes.
And then you have also offices for staff and in terms of, I think you undersold it a little bit. Uh, the CTE program, you're actually going to be uh, building out a space where they can have competitions.
Yes, outside of the building, but undercover would actually be a robotics arena. Just because we have the space and it's something they need, they have an amazing program.
Okay, excellent. And uh, one fast question, as we're checking our time here. Of course, you're working with a mullering field folks and ensuring that um, that the community is engaged upon in that. And what, what type of um, community engagement have we planned for the future?
We've done some, we haven't done a lot. We've done several meetings or I think two meetings now. But we have more engagement planned. We're working with our partners at Contigo, which is a community outreach partner that we brought to the board before. We work with, uh, we have a survey that's ready to actually go out to it's within a one mile radius around mullering field to understand just how people feel about changes to mullering field and what they want versus what they don't want, et cetera. And then it'll just be a, with approval of this plan tonight, it will be actually working with the community to see how they respond to that. And then actually going to city council to see if we can work with city to do some type of a, whether it be an eminent domain or a land swap or whatever, to actually take over some of that property on Derby Street.
Okay, great. That's a really important component of getting that CNE program off the ground with a softball and baseball being shifted down there. Um, and finally, one quick question on the Berkeley Arts Magnet Modernization. BAM has, uh, which I, my kids went through and I was on the board there, uh, the PTA has had um, temporary um, classrooms for many, many years. In this drawing here, I think literally since 2011 and they're still there. Up on the uh, the right-hand corner of this drawing here, are those the EC1, EC2, EC3? What do those refer to? Because that, I believe that's where the units are currently.
Yeah, so they, what's, what's there now, those portables actually do remain as part of that plan. What goes above that, and they, they are part of the modernization. But then what, what you're seeing there, um, I believe that's the solar canopy is actually extending over the top of those portables. It's just a way to capture additional and make that a ZNE project, Zero Net Energy project.
So of course, I think that um, this is not a finalized plan, but um, there should be some review of the portables and whether or not there can be some other capacity provided um, uh, instead of the portables, which have been there for quite some time.
Well, and that's part of the beauty of this, right? I mean, the reality is, is that now with knowing that we do need to move this out to 2029, having the potentially to 2029, having the conversations even around what does maybe another bond measure look like? But also what does state funding look like? We still don't know that. We, we don't even know how they're going to allocate that out. And if there's funding for, if they, depending on what they put the rates at for new versus replacement or modernization, it actually might make sense to increase this project and put a new building, right? Onto, not on the existing because it's a historic building, but out in that corner for additional classroom space. This gives us the time we need to study it further, once all those rules are released.
Thank you. So I think we need some more time. We have additional items, they also want to do the, the um, consider, the, consider the recommendations. I think board members, um, we had extended to what, 1120, which is like four minutes. Is there, I know it's a long night, we've had a lot of presentations, et cetera. Is there a motion to extend beyond 1120?
Can we, we can't, so we have to wrap it up.
We have to.
So what I will say is this is we, we're, we're seeking action on the overall plan, right? Because we need to do our budget adjustments. But what we can take to is action on the overall plan with a recommendation that any projects that you might have concerns about, such as BAM, goes back to facility subcommittee and then comes back to board.
Okay, makes sense.
So if you want to give it a broad approval and then tell us, but go back and talk about BAM a little more, right? We can absolutely do that. And Director Brown and.
No, it's actually me and Director Panoski.
Yes, that's right.
I would, I would move in the interest of time, so we get to last one. I would move um, to approve it, but uh, with uh, some information coming about like what should go in the future bond, like other proj, other big projects that we should get to at other sites, particularly Willard and other sites that haven't had large capital projects, to bring that back to facility sub. But overall approve it and also address Director Chang's concerns about that.
I said, I second that motion.
Director Korn?
Yes.
Director Vasilev?
Yes.
Vice President Chang?
Yes. Moving on to, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have to hustle, we don't mean to push us. We've got 14.2, uh, which was shifted from consent to action.
Yes, um, directors, I just wanted to call out a small change in the resolution that said to protect our undocumented students. Wanted to change the provision that mentions SB 48 to be it further resolved that the Berkeley Unified School District, along with the City of Berkeley, calls on the California Legislature to pass SB 48 to keep Immigration and Customs Enforcement off school campuses, protecting school attendance and funding amid deportation threats. This change will allow us to send a letter of support to the Senate for SB 48. Other districts are doing it, other counties are doing it. And um, CDE asks us uh, for support. And so I would ask my board colleagues to approve this uh, reaffirmation. I would like to make a motion to approve the reaffirmation. And also um, to allow me and Director Korn to work on a letter of support that we will send to the Senate on behalf of the Board of Education.
Second.
Signed by Director Korn.
Director Vasilev?
Yes.
Director Korn?
Yes.
And Vice President Chang?
Yes.
Um, moving on, so we have informational items, we're moving on to item 16. There doesn't appear to be anyone with their hand raised for extended public comment. Uh, are there any extended board member comments?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, we have someone, person, one person for, literally. Yeah, we've got one minute until.
Bottom.
Thank you.
Last year, when arts students were at Longfellow and the construction noise was so loud that they couldn't hear and think, we were told, hey, that's part of construction. Then we got moved to this new facility, which we understand, um, the old one got, you know. And with it, we're having um, safety issues because we're moving a drop-off zone to a bike, a bike zone. The building has water, now that it's raining, there's water on the floors. The um, playground is a parking lot. And the one question I would just ask all of you guys, I think parents are being very understanding, but would you put your children in that situation?
Thank you, thank you so much.